Uh, Council Bernard. Okay. I will start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge and appreciate the land on which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Called to order, declarations of conflict of interest. Any to call? Counselor Beck, where would that be in the agenda?
STR, uh, the insurance.
Okay, that's under planning?
Uh, yeah, sorry, I don't have the, uh...
All right.
What, resolution under planning?
Yeah, so when it does come up, you...
I'll excuse myself.
Leave the room. Leave the chamber.
Thank you.
Any other conflicts of interest? No? All good to go? Okay. Pro of the agenda? Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Beck. All those in favor? Okay. So we have two sets in minutes. Well, actually, more than that. We have regular monthly meeting, May 13th. Special meetings, May 20th, 26, 27 of 2025. Need someone to move them. Moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Matar. Questions called. All those in favor? Okay. Any business arising out of the minutes? Any business? Oh, thank you. Hot off the press. Okay. No business arising from the minutes. So we'll go to the reports at the Standing Committee, and the first report is Planning, Heritage Development. And the Chair of that Standing Committee is our Deputy Mayor, Alana Yankoff. Deputy?
Thank you, your worship. Um, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee has not met since our last regular meeting. The Heritage Board has not met. The Design Review Board has not met. The Planning Board has met on Thursday, May 22nd. Copies of your minutes are in your package. The Planning and Heritage Committee met on May 23rd. Again, your minutes are in your package. We, um, we also met again on June 3rd, the committee. Minutes are in your package. Planning Board also met again on June 3rd. Minutes are in the package. And of course, for your information, you'll see the year-to-date permit application issued in the back of your package. And just a few highlights from the last month. Just following the public meeting, some final updates are underway to reflect feedback received and facilitate the adoption of our new official plan at a future meeting of council in the coming month. Our zoning bylaw, the consultants leading the zoning and development bylaw review has completed their first round of stakeholder engagement, so we'll continue on that process. The members of public are still encouraged to submit their feedback to the, um, to the city's online portal, which is the charlottownhall.ca. So the consultant is also conducting a comprehensive review of the current zoning and subdivision regulations. This process will identify opportunities for improvement, modernization, alignment with the municipal official plan, and provincial regulations. We're hoping that this project will be completed by the fall of 2025. In terms of e-permitting, the department continues to receive training as part of the phased implementation of the new electronic e-permitting system. And what else do we have? Pre-approved housing design initiative. The request for proposals for consulting services to develop our accessory dwelling unit, the ADUs, has recently closed, so staff are currently reviewing those submissions. And again, that project is scheduled to be completed by fall of 2025. Heritage Preservation Bylaw, RFP, that has also been, um, the RFP to support the review and update on the city's current bylaw is now open and will close on June 25th. I think that's about it. Um, any questions, I'll do my best to answer. It's a busy night. We have, um, nine, nine resolutions, eight second readings, one first reading. Don't quote me on that, but there's a lot, so.
Expect to get out of here tonight.
Thank you.
Just want to note that building construction statistics for the end of May 2025, it's up over 66%, same time last year. It's Bowman. Okay. None? Do you want to read the first resolution? CAO Fraser?
Your worship, Planning and Heritage Resolution Number One is moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to amend Appendix C approved site-specific exemptions of the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw as it pertains to 20 Rawdon Avenue, PID number 396937, in a low-density residential R2 zone to allow for the existing building, 325 square meters, 3,500 square feet, on the subject property be used as an automotive repair shop, and that an automotive repair shop be added as additional permitted use for the zoning that applies to the subject property be approved, subject to a development agreement being entered into between the applicants and the city.
Resolution's on the floor. Counselor McCabe and Counselor Matar.
Thank you, your worship. Can, can I just get a little clarity? I actually missed the planning board. I'm not sure if it was discussed what would be included in the development agreement, but what is going to be included in the development agreement?
So there, uh, there probably was highlighted in the minutes, but the minutes are really long, so I'm sure trying to find, you know. Um, I'll give it a stab. I know that we talked about the noise pollution. We talked about the cleanliness of the property. Um, the also the, um, the applicant is willing to sign the development agreement based on not looking to expand any more than what they're asking to do. And, uh, David, was there anything else on that development agreement? Which, of course, will be worked out with staff, but the, all of the noted items were highlighted, but I think those are the main ones where they not?
Uh, through the chair, that's correct. Yeah, that would cover off for all the items noted, yeah.
Okay. Mister, Counselor Matar? Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Sure you can.
And I, I did...
Can you just stand up?
I'm sorry. I did see that and understand those were the issues that were being addressed. I guess I'm wondering, what are the mitigations that they're putting in place to address those issues? Is that in there too that I missed? Because if we're signing a development agreement, what are we agreeing to?
Do you want to defer? It's, it's your call. Hold on.
Yeah, I'll defer that one to David because we're kind of getting into more the operational aspect of the, of the application. So, over to you, David.
Mister Gundrum?
Through the chair, Counselor McCabe, the development agreement would reinforce and cover for things that can't, that aren't otherwise spoken to or regulated in the zoning bylaws. So that may include that doors have to remain closed certain hours of the day, that the, um, site is kept in a reasonable state of affairs. It kind of overlaps a little bit with some of the aspects of the nuisance bylaw, but it gives us leverage to go further than that on a site-specific basis to, uh, provide conditions that apply to the nature of the use, being an automotive repair garage, so.
Good. Do you want to, is there an auxiliary question? Is there something you want to...
I, I, your worship?
No, you go right ahead. Thank you.
Um, I, I don't think that, with all due respect, I don't think Counselor McCabe's question was answered. She was more looking for, you know, is that something that council is supposed to see to approve as part of this resolution? And I think the answer is no, but I, I will defer that to David, but I'm pretty sure we don't often have the details of the development agreement. That's for staff and the applicant to work out. David, is that correct? Or should we be seeing that? Or will that be coming back at some point?
Through the chair, you had it right the first time. It's not something that is approved by council or comes back to council. It's dealt with operationally in tandem with the building permit.
Counselor Beck?
Thank you, your worship. Um, yeah, my, my opinion hasn't really changed on this throughout. I didn't support it at the committee meeting, and I'm not going to support it here again tonight, but I think what I, and part of my rationale for it is I, I would like to see it revert back to the original usage that it was for, and not to continue its illegal non-conforming. I'd like to see it revert back to housing, but anyway, that's my personal view. On a side note, I am kind of bothered by the fact that we had, I know we had two votes in this. We had the original vote, it was five to four. Ninety percent of the councillors were here, but yet for some reason we came back and did another vote. And I don't, I don't really understand why that happened, but it did. But we make votes. We had quorum on that night, and I think just as a matter of procedure and protocol or process, I think if we're going to have those revotes again, I never, I don't think we really got a full explanation as to, other than not all councillors were here. And so if there's some, something that could be shared, some light shared on that tonight, that would be fine, but as a process of going forward, I would like to see our council decisions, unless there's something, error in process or error in procedure, whatever it might be, that we stick to what our original votes were. Thanks.
Deputy?
Thanks. So the reason that this came back was because the, um, there was a request for a reconsideration. So the reconsideration process is what we went through. And when the reconsideration came to council, council voted against staff's recommendation, which was to not reconsider it because it didn't meet the threshold. However, council went against staff's recommendation to not reconsider and went ahead and reconsidered, which started the process all over again, which is why we're back here today to, to, um, to discuss this and vote on it.
Okay, Counselor Beck, second time?
Yeah, so just as a follow-up, I guess the only rationale that I heard was not all councillors were present, so that's why we revoked it, or that's why we reconsidered the motion. Was there anything else other than not all councillors were present that forced us to reconsider the vote? Why it was brought back to council? I don't recall anything being articulated, but I might be wrong. Um, but, so if there was something other than just it came back, I, I know it came back, and I know we voted differently the second time it came back, but why did it come back in the first place, I guess is my question?
Okay, so we do have a resolution that's in front of us. Question? Questions called. Counselor Duran? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, so I have Deputy Mayor, Counselor Matar, Counselor Twill, Counselor Ramsey, Counselor Duran, Counselor Bernard, against, Counselor Ramsey, oh, sorry, no, no, Counselor Beck, McLeire, and McCabe. So six, three. Okay, do you want to read the next one?
Now I am. Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Two, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that council denied the request to reconsider a decision of the city to issue a building and development permit, number 009 BLD 25, as it pertains to 18 Trainer Street, PID number 889873, concerning the construction of a cottage rental development on the subject property.
So Deputy, you're up to speak. Thank you.
So this is another reconsideration, and if we want to go back in time, the way Counselor Beck was discussing, the last time we came back for a reconsideration, council went against staff's recommendation, even though, even though it didn't, it already did not meet the threshold to take it back to reconsider, but because council voted against staff's recommendation, it went back. So this time, we have a staff recommendation to not reconsider an application that was an es-of-right application that came in to the staff. This was never a council, um, decision in the first place, but because of our zoning and development bylaw, it states that a person can apply for a reconsideration on anything that is either a council decision or a staff decision, and so that's why we're here tonight. So, like I say, the staff have, do not see that it met the threshold of the three, three items that you need to meet to meet a threshold. So here we are, um, to discuss that. So I just wanted to let everyone know that, you know, there's, there's lots of parts of this file that we have a lot of questions on, but tonight, we're dealing with a reconsideration. We're not here to talk about access off of highways and things like that. This is all about a reconsideration. So if anyone has any questions on the reconsideration, I'm happy to answer those questions, or we also have David here as well.
Counselor McCabe?
Thank you, and thank you for explaining that, Deputy. And I think there are three thresholds that something has to be met within those three thresholds for us to consider. So maybe it would be really good to give a quick cold-nosed version under our zoning and development bylaw for what that should be.
Deputy? Is that all right that... No, is...
Repeat that again, I'm so sorry.
Could, she wants the, the criteria listed for the reconsideration. Do you have that? Or do you refer?
Um, I'll paraphrase, but it's kind of like this, but someone can give me the fancy word in a minute.
We're listing.
So the three things are, um, to, to, to meet the threshold, it would either be, is there, is there new information since the staff have given this permit? Has there been new information come forward that would cause them to not be able to give that permit? The second one was, was the process followed? Did staff follow the process correctly to give this person their, their permit? And the third one is, um, uh, let me think. The third one is, oh, shoot, shoot. Oh, material change. Was there a material change? I think that was, David, did I explain those correctly? I think that's pretty good. Okay.
Talk to us while you're naming them off. Questions called? Okay. So it's to deny the request to reconsider. This is denying it. All those in favor of the resolution, please put up your hand. It says that council deny the request to reconsider a decision of the city to issue a building permit. All those in favor of that resolution. Counselor Twill, yea, yea? Okay. Nine, zero. Okay. Thank you.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Three, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie, or, yes, it's actually, is this the one, Counselor Beck, where you're excusing yourself from? Because you're, the name was changed on the, the name was changed on here?
No, no, it, it, that's a comment from the committee.
Okay. All right, so it is seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe, that council approved the proposed phasing as attached for the completion and finalization of the city's official plan.
Counselor Twill? Did you want to speak to it, Counselor Twill?
No, I, I...
Did you miss something?
Yeah, I just wanted an explanation on the previous resolution.
It, it's already voted on, sir. Okay, so...
Just, just before we go, though, there was...
Sure.
There's two, there's already an appeal at I.R.A.C., is that correct?
I would have to ask the deputy. Deputy, do you want to give some post, uh, information?
I'm happy to answer this as long as I'm following procedure properly.
Yeah, I, I...
And if I can't, I, I have the answer.
Are we doing it all right?
But I'm just have to make sure that I, procedurally, this is correct.
I just don't want to jeopardize anything going off to an appeal, right? So we're all right to do it? If she can answer? Okay, we, yeah. So I think that would, if we start answering questions on a resolution that was already passed, I think we would, we'd jeopardize. Counselor Twill, so we're just on this one. Number three, uh, completion and finalization of the city's official plan. Questions called? Okay. All those in favor of Resolution Number Three, please raise your hand. Do you have the resolution there, Counselor Twill? Good? Nine, zero. Okay.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Four, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by, oh, this is the one. Okay.
So just on that, Counselor Twill, are you not in conflict? Yeah. Think you have to go out the main door. So both Councillors Twill and Beck are in conflict, and we're down to seven votes. Okay, do you want to read it?
Moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that council instruct staff to maintain the requirement for $2 million in commercial general liability insurance coverage for the operation of short-term rentals as outlined in Section 10 of the Short-Term Rental Licensing Bylaw 202 through PHSTR 2000.
Okay. Questions called? Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, I have one, a deputy, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, Counselor Matar, Counselor Ramsey, Counselor Bernard, Counselor McCabe, Counselor McLeire. Six, one against? Okay, six, one. Okay, can you just ask them to come back in? Okay, Counselor Twill?
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Five, your worship, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the following major variance for the subject property addressed as 35 Alice Avenue, PID 1110683, be approved to allow for an existing semi-detached dwelling to project into the rear yard setback by 4.71 meters, 15.45 feet, for a reduced rear yard setback of 2.79 meters, 9.15 feet, whereas a rear yard setback of 7.5 meters, 24.6 feet, is otherwise required in the R2S zone.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, Counselor Twill, yea or nay? Okay, nine, zero.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Six, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that the following major variances for the subject properties identified as PID numbers 278-226, 278-234, Kensington Road and Falconwood Drive be approved with regard to a proposed five-story, 41-unit apartment building having both surface level and underground parking to permit a maximum building height of 18.3 meters, 60.04 feet, whereas a maximum building height of 15 meters, 49.2 feet, 15 meters, 49.2 feet, is otherwise permitted for apartment dwellings in the R3 zone, and to permit a minimum lot area of 100 square meters per apartment unit, whereas a minimum lot area of 140 square meters is otherwise required per apartment unit on a corner lot in the R3 zone.
Okay. Questions called? Questions called? Nope. Okay, nope, nope, I just want to make sure. Green light's on? Green light's gone to red light. Okay. Hot mic. Can you just stand up, Counselor Twill?
Yeah.
I know. Just want to make sure.
Didn't we approve this last month?
So what are we doing now? Are you asking, are you asking the deputy?
I'm asking somebody.
Okay. Deputy, did, can you just answer that?
This one is, no, this is a different, are we talking about, yeah, this is just for the property now. So we did, we did some of it last month, but this is for, actually for the property, so it's a different, it's a different, if it's a different one.
This is a different?
Yeah, yeah, we did the property, and now this is the zoning. Of the variance. Yeah, so it's just the next step.
I thought we did that last month.
Nope.
No, we did, no, we did the first step. Yeah, we changed the zoning.
Changed the zoning.
Yeah, and now, and now they need a variance to proceed. So the zoning was done last month, and this time, now that, now that the zone, now that the zoning's been changed, now in order to adhere to our bylaw, they need a variance. So that's the next step.
So you don't do all that at once?
No.
You can sometimes, but you can't always.
Yeah. Okay. You're good? Okay. Questions called? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Nine, zero. Thank you.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Seven, moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that counsel approve the request to proceed to public consultation regarding the following rezoning and official plan amendment requests for the subject properties identified as lots 16, 17, 28, and 29 on Evelyn Street and Violet Circle, PID 778-308, to rezone the subject properties from the low-density residential single R2S zone to the medium-density residential R3 zone, and to change the land use designation in the City of Charlestown official plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential to facilitate the development of each of the four lots with four-unit stacked townhouse dwelling.
Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, and mine's just more a comment. Again, tonight I did make this comment at Planning Board. This, this new development area barely has dry ink from when it's been signed as a new, where it was just zoned as R2 for these lots. And we're back here, this is the second time. We did four or two lots last meeting, now we're moving the zoning on four more lots today. I just think that we have to do better. If this is an area where R3 zoning works for stacked townhouse units, it would be really nice if that would just be how the community was zoned, rather than having to keep coming back every time someone wants to change the zoning that the ink's barely dry on. Not sure if we can do something with that. I guess not, but just seems redundant.
Well, we'll just ask the deputy. Deputy, I'm sure you have a answer? Thank you very much.
So anybody can apply for variance, you know that. What you can do is there's still that timeframe where you can put suggestions forward to Rob, working on our zoning and development bylaw, if you see things that we could tighten up and streamline a process. So put that forward, and that can be part of the discussion for, for our new zoning and development bylaw. That's all I got.
Yeah. Yeah, that's just like, yeah. Yeah, it's go to a public consultation. Yeah. No, this is like the love subdivision. Questions called? Questions called? All those in favor? Okay, nine, zero.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Eight, moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that counsel deny the following rezoning and official plan amendment requests for the subject property identified as 33 Morrow Drive, PID number 366997. Amend Appendix G zoning map of the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw from low-density residential R2 to medium-density residential townhouse R3T zone, and amend Appendix A of the future land use map of the City of Charlestown official plan from low-density residential to medium-density residential.
Counselor Twill?
Once again, I have to ask a question. Did we not already deal with this application? We, we had a public meeting. People were here, they expressed their views.
Deputy.
Are we still dealing with the same, same request? And if not, what's changed?
Deputy Mayor Yankoff, you're on the spot.
So, what happened was, you're right, we had the public meeting, the public showed up, the staff wrote up their report, and it was all ready to go to Planning Board, and they wrote up their report that they were not recommending to accept this application. And then the applicant put it on hold for a bit as they explored some other things, and they thought they were going to pull the application, but they didn't, they left it there for a while. So then they decided, no, we want, they want to proceed to the completion of the process. So it actually has never been here for that final step to hear after the public meeting and staff's recommendation. So, so it just was a, there was a, there was a pause because of the applicant. So it is here for its final step, which is, the staff are not supporting the application and the applicant. So you're partly right, you, you do remember it, you just, but it never came back since the public meeting, and it was just delayed. So here we are.
Questions called? Okay, questions called? All those in favor? Okay. Counselor McCabe, yea? Okay, nine, zero.
Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Nine, moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that counsel approve the consolidation of vacant lands being a portion of PID 193284 and a portion of PID 1100528, with property addressed as 69 McWilliams Road, PID number 663823, subject to a final pinned survey.
Counselor Twill? Question?
Yeah, I do have a question. Does this have to go through the public consultation process? Residents of the community, they have to be consulted?
Deputy? I think I already did, huh? Did you just go live? Yeah?
Uh, no, this does not have to go to a public consultation.
This is a lot consolidation, correct?
Lot consolidation.
Yeah, it's not a rezoning.
It's not a rezoning, it's just a lot consolidation. So the zoning is staying the same, it's just consolidating a lot.
They were notified that they were going to consolidate the properties. Yeah, it's part of the, it's part of, oh, sorry, go ahead there, Deputy. Counsel, you have to get up and ask the questions.
So within 100 meters, the residents would have been notified, they would have, they had the ability to write letters in, but, but this doesn't prompt a public meeting. So the residents always get notified, it just doesn't prompt a public meeting. So there was still the opportunity for residents to write in, and I think there might have been one letter in the report, if I recall correctly. Yeah, so.
Okay.
I don't remember if it was in favor.
Yeah.
Favor, I think it was in favor.
Questions called? Questions called? Thank you, Counselor Ramsey. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Nine, zero. Okay.
That's it for the resolutions, your worship, and we have some bylaw readings.
Go ahead.
So we have the first reading of zoning and development bylaw PHZD 2, to adopt a bylaw PHZD 2099, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw by amending Appendix C, approved site-specific exemptions of the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw as it pertains to 20 Rawdon Avenue, PID number 396937, in the low-density residential R2 zone, to allow for the existing building 325 square meters, 3,500 square feet, on the subject property to be used as an automotive repair shop, and that an automotive repair shop be added as an additional permitted use for the zoning that applies to the subject property, subject to a development agreement being entered into between the applicant and the city. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw PHZD 2099, as it pertains to 20 Rawdon Avenue, PID number 396937, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, and that's moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
So this is the first reading. Debate allowed? Permitted? Good? Yep? Okay. Shall it pass? Okay. Those against? Okay. Just one second. Six, three.
So the, this, then, your worship, is the second reading, to adopt bylaw PHZD 2092, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from medium-density mixed-use residential MUR to institutional one, from low-density residential R2 to institutional one, and from low-density residential single R2S to medium-density mixed-use residential MUR for the unaddressed properties identified as PID numbers 1100528 and 193284. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw PHZD 2092, as it pertains to unaddressed properties identified as PID numbers 1100528 and 193284, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting. I think I got that wrong. We're in the second reading of this one.
That's right.
Whereas the bylaw, my apologies, your worship.
That's right.
Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw PHZD 2092, as it pertains to the unaddressed properties identified as PID's number 1100528 and 193284, as attached, were read and approved a first time in May 13, 2025. Be it resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and approved, and that was moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall it carry? Contrary? None. Okay. Okay. Excellent, please.
Zoning and Development bylaw PHZD Point 2, to adopt a bylaw PHZD 2093, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from single detached residential R1L zone to the medium-density residential townhouse R32 zone for the subject properties located at 171-181 Kensington Road, PID numbers 389, 385930, 385948, 555177. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw PHZD 2093, as it pertains to properties identified as 171-181 Kensington Road, PID numbers 385930, 385948, 555177, as attached, was read and approved a first time on May 13, 2025. Be it resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and approved, and that was moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall it carry? Contrary? Okay, contrary is Counselors. Okay. Counselor Mert. Beck. Twill. That's it? Okay, those four, please just raise your hand. I didn't. Yes, I know. Okay. Good. That's it. Okay, want to go to the next one?
Zoning and Development bylaw PHZD Point 2, to adopt bylaw PHZD 2094, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from the comprehensive development area CDA zone to the medium-density residential R3 zone for the subject property located at 10 Frida Lane, PID number 1179670. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw PHZD 2094, as it pertains to the subject property located at 10 Frida Lane, PID 1179670, as attached, was read and approved a first time on May 13. Be it resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved, and that was moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Okay. Shall it carry? Anyone opposed? Nine, zero. Okay. Thank you.
Zoning and Development bylaw PHZD Point 2, to adopt bylaw PHZD 2095, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of zoning and development bylaw from the single detached residential R1S zone to the medium-density residential R3 zone for the subject property located at 139 Kensington Road, PID, PID numbers 278226 and 278234. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw PHZD 2095, as it pertains to the subject property located at 139 Kensington Road, PID 278226 and 278234, as attached, was read and approved a first time on May 13, 2025. Be it resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and approved, and that was moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall it carry? Okay. Contrary? No. Okay. How many more do you got there?
Couple.
Jeez, chief. I think we're going to have to read over the next coming months.
Zoning and Development bylaw PHZD Point 2, to adopt bylaw PHZD 2096, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from the low-density residential single R2S zone to the medium-density residential R3 zone for three lots identified as lots 24, 25, and 26 on Evelyn Street, PID's 1178193, 1178201, and 1178219. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw PHZD 2096, as it pertains to the three lots identified as lots 24, 25, and 26 on Evelyn Street, PID 1178193, 1178201, 1178219, as attached, was read and approved a first time on May 13, 2025. Be it resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall it carry? Contrary? No. Okay. Thank you.
Good. Zoning and Development bylaw PHZD Point 2, to adopt bylaw PHZD 2097, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from the low-density residential single R2S zone to the comprehensive development area CDA zone for the properties identified as 161-167 Mount Edward Road, PID numbers 390260, 390237, 566976. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw PHZD 2097, as it pertains to the properties identified as 161-167 Mount Edward Road, PID numbers 390260, 390237, 566976, as attached, was read and approved a first time on May 13, 2025. Be it resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Shall it carry? Good.
Zoning and Development bylaw PHZD Point 2, to adopt PHZD 2098, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw from the low-density residential single R2S zone to the comprehensive development area CDA zone for the unaddressed subject properties identified as PID's 134957 and Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw PHZD 2098, as it pertains to the unaddressed properties identified as PID's 1349, oh, they changed, we've got a different number here, just one sec. Looks like 95.
I think it's 134.
134957, sorry. 957, and 1180348. Does anybody want that read again? Are we good?
No, it's changed. It's changed in our document.
It is changed.
Okay, it's good? Okay.
Excuse me?
I think Counselor Ryan was in conflict the last time, I'm just making sure that he is aware.
Counselor Ryan.
I'm just listening to her.
Okay, just look at the address. Is it, is it Evelyn? What, what street is it?
No, these are.
It's new developments.
Oh, this is the 800 lots.
This is Valley Grass.
Just one second.
I just, I'm just, sorry, I just didn't want you.
No, no, that's good.
Good catch.
Okay.
Yeah, there is no discussion.
No, but he cannot vote.
Can't vote.
No, I know.
So. So, can you just read?
Do you want me to reread that?
Please.
So, I have a corrected number on here, so just let me make sure I got it right. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown zoning and development bylaw PHZD 2098, as it pertains to the unaddressed properties identified as PID numbers 13495...
57.
And 1180348, as attached, was read and approved a first time on May 13th, 2025. Be it resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe.
Thank you. Shall it carry? Pass. So, just in the future, if someone does notice a conflict that might have gotten over, it's all right to call it out. Okay? I didn't notice it. So, it's... No, no, it's good. Thank... Yeah. So, is that? Well, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Great report. Wow. Lots of reading. Okay, our next report is... I'll go back to my agenda. We're going to Environment and Sustainability, 6.2. Who's the deputy chair on that? Counsel Twill, so you'll have to present the report. Okay, just one sec, Counsel Twill. Go ahead.
Chair Trevor McKinnon couldn't be with us tonight. She's not feeling well. So, he contacted me earlier and asked if I would give his report. So, I'll make an attempt. I want to thank Jessica for the briefing notes, and I'll proceed to read them out. A successful ERBA Day with the mayor's office in Parks and Rec, where held in Victoria Park with West Kent, Parkdale, Prince Street schools, over 100 students spent the morning on planting trees and learning about nature. In May, Charlestown recorded 125,062 transit rides. This is a 2.6% increase from May of '24 to date in 2025. There have been 609, 275 riders. That's a testimony that our service provider contractor, Mike Cassidy, is doing one hell of a job. We're very fortunate to have Mike Cassidy as a true partner. So, I think, you know, I think the success continues on an annual basis. And again, it's to his dedication, his determination, and diligence. Bike Week is underway this week with events ranging from supporting seniors using e-bikes to stay active to a group, to a group mountain bike ride in the East Royalty Acadian Forest to celebrations of kids biking to school, both independently and as part of a bike program, bike bus program at the two pilot schools. Gardening in small spaces will be held on June 21st at the new Simmons Sports Center from 2:00 to 4:00. This event will educate and encourage residents to use their urban spaces to grow food. The city partnered with Charlestown Rural, Ellens Creek, and the Watershed Group, and the PEI Invasive Species Council to engage over 100 students in removing invasive plants and planting native species in the Hermitch Creek natural area. Staff launched a major restoration project in Windsor Park with over 1,000 trees and shrubs to be planted over two years to increase the tree cover habitat. That's a remarkable achievement. On the weekend, staff held an event to learn about growing hedge growers. The event was at the West Royalty Community Center and was funded by the PEI Climate Action Fund. On June 7th, staff created a new pollinator garden to support biodiversity and enhance the Ellens Creek natural areas, thanks to the Rotary Club of Charlestown, who funded the garden, benches, and signage. In partnership with Public Works, Parks and Recreation, large specimen trees are being planted along streets and in the parks will be completed in the next two weeks. Victoria Park Natural Area Restoration for the season begins this week to continue the post-Viona recovery efforts. I'll do my best to answer any questions. And of course, we have our manager, Jessica here, who's doing a great job for us. Thank you.
Yeah. No, I was there on Saturday, Counsel Twill, at West Royalty. And the pollinators love bees. They like bees, butterflies, and hummingbirds. So, it's very good for the ecosystem. Any questions? No? Okay.
Did you have a question, sir?
I just had a comment because I attended.
No, no, we don't take comments. We take questions.
Next report is your report, Counsel Twill. Public Works. Counsel Mitchell Twill.
Welcome, Yalbear, back to the Charlestown City Chambers. We have three resolutions for Counsel's consideration, and we'll certainly do our best to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Counsel Strong.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Twill, for your report, and thank you for your email the other day. You had copied myself and a couple of staff in an update of the Sherwood Hall I had asked last month, and I guess it was, you know, with the changing over of the managers again, and I didn't get a response where we're going. I brought it up at Parks and Rec, and there's going to be a master plan, but we were looking more for the Sherwood Hall. I know the rink is going to stay for a little bit, so I'm just wondering, maybe this month, you can talk to our manager again about what the plan is for the Sherwood Hall and the property next door, to see if we can get this on track. We do have, you know, $500,000 in our budget for this year, and I'd just like to see it moving, because if you don't keep asking the questions, things stall, as you know. So, I'm just going to keep bringing it up and see if we can get some feet to this project. So, I appreciate your email. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counsel Ron, and I want you to know that I'm very cognizant of your efforts in terms of the revitalization of the Sherwood Hall. And as you pointed out, pointed out accurately, there's $500,000 in the budget to do the necessary enhancements and improvements. So, without further ado, Yalbear, you're on.
Great. Thank you, Counsel Twill, through to Counsel Duran. So, we have, staff has been looking into the matter. Our Public Works staff have met with Parks and Recreation as well to discuss potential work that's going on there. They will be looking at the arena as well and looking at doing some renovations, I believe, or they have some budget for that as well on the Parks and Recreation end. So, we're just looking to kind of loop everybody in together in the various departments and see, have a plan going forward. So, we hope we'll have an RFP issued for some engineering services or architectural work to see what we may do with the area, and then take it from there.
Thank you very much. I certainly appreciate that. You know, I know it takes time, but, you know, we'd just like to get some, get some feet work onto this and get it going. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Want to read the first resolution there? CAO?
Public Works First Resolution, Your Worship, is moved by Counsel Mitchell Twill, seconded by Counsel John McAllaire. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotes for the purchase of five new 2500 Series crew cab works trucks, the submission of Farrell Ford in the amount of $68,999 each, plus all applicable taxes, and one single cab work truck in the amount of $62,999, plus all applicable taxes, for a total of $407,994, plus all applicable taxes, be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? Good. Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Eight zero.
Public Works Resolution Number 2, moved by Counsel Mitchell Twill, seconded by Counsel John McAllaire, that as per the, be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for proposals for three municipal sidewalk machines with attachments, the submission of Saunders equipment through the canoe procurement program, and the amount of $617,964.14, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called? All those in favor? Okay.
The Third Resolution for Public Works, moved by Counsel Justin Matard, seconded by Counsel John McAllaire, that as per the conditions of the public request for tender 2025 Street Resurfacing Package B, the submission of Birch Hill Construction Limited in the amount of $1,857,593, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Nope. Counsel Duran, then Counsel Twill. Counsel Duran, just one second. Counsel Strong. Go ahead.
Do you want me to go first?
Yeah, no, you're up. You're up first.
Okay. I read in the minutes there that there was a vote, and then you came back another week, and you changed the vote after talking to legal. I know there were some concerns about this company. They've done a number of projects, and the delays were, you know, I guess at the time unacceptable, or there was concerns brought forward about these, about this tender being issued. So, I can't read in the notes what had happened, why the change, if the committee met again and changed their vote, but maybe somebody could explain it.
Okay. Counsel Twill.
Good question. The first meeting that was held, we had a discussion regarding Package B, regarding the process and the awarding of the tender. At that time, as I recall, the committee was split. We didn't have a full turnout of the committee. The committee was split, and I broke the tie in favor of island construction to be awarded the contract. Subsequently, staff wanted to have further engagement, our senior administration, and I said, okay, well, we'll have another discussion, fine, but my personal, my personal position did not change, but wanted to add a respect for our senior administration in the, in the Public Works Department and the director, was to go back and have a discussion, and we did. And the result was, we didn't have a full turnout of the committee. Voting member of the mayor was not in attendance for this particular vote. He was there for the first vote. So, in this particular vote, Counsel McAllaire, Counsel Matard decided to go with staff's recommendation. So, trying to explain it the best way I can, as the chair, I did not have a vote, because the two committee members decided to support staff's recommendation toward the Birch Hill. So, having said that, as I said, my position has not changed. First and foremost, I want to state unequivocally, I respect our senior administration for the work that they do and for what recommendation they brought forward, but I respectfully disagree. I respectfully disagree, I guess from a number of perspectives. The first thing I want to bring to Counsel's attention is that an RFP creates no obligation on the part of the City of Charlestown to award the contract or to reimburse proponents for proposal preparation expenses. City of Charlestown reserves a right to accept or reject any and all proposals in whole or in part received as a result of this request, and to negotiate any, any manner necessary to best serve the interests of the city. The decision on which tender best satisfies the needs of the city rests solely with the city, and any decision is not open to appeal. Submissions will not be evaluated if the proponents current or past corporate or any other interest made in the city's opinion give rise to a conflict in connection with this project. The city specifically reserves a right to reject all tenders if none is considered to be satisfactory. In that event, as its option to call for additional tenders, no term or condition shall be implied based upon any industry or trade practice or custom and any practice or policy of the city or otherwise which is inconsistent or conflicts with the provisions contained in these conditions. And there's other preambles to this, to what the prerogatives are in terms of when someone sent, puts in a bid, the bid package clearly states the city's right to a refusal, and there's other information. I'm opposing this resolution, and, and, you know, I tried to do some research with respect to whether or not the city necessarily has to accept the lowest tender. And I've looked back on other bids that the City of Charlestown had, had received, and it's not always necessarily that the City of Charlestown accepts the lowest bid. There's a number of different examples, and I, I don't have to highlight who these companies are, but my decision is based on who can best serve the best interest of the City of Charlestown. I truly believe, in this particular case, that who can best serve the best city, best serve the City of Charlestown value for dollar, resume, an outstanding, undeniable resume, and this city providing this kind of service, paving, road construction since 1949, that's an incredible resume. It really is. And so, this, this notion that we must accept the lowest tender is not really true, because like I said, I've done enough research now, and I think we, as a city council and a city corporation, I'm suggesting a review of all the tenders that we've accepted, all the tenders that are awarded, and that will bring to light the fact that we don't always accept the lowest tender. So, you know, previously, you had to outline your resume as to, as to what, what, what service, what's your resume, what's your history, what's your credentials, your qualifications, your work history. And I really believe that this is a no-brainer for me personally.
Okay. Thank you.
That we should be going with the best, the best firm in this province in the history and their, and their years of work, and I don't believe that's bear fruit in this particular resolution.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Counsel Bernard, Counsel McKay, Matard.
Thank you, Your Worship. And we've been down this road before. You can't, you can't come here, you go at the tender, and you can't come back and start picking which and who you want to win that tender. We did this. This happened with the trucks, delayed the trucks. Now, we're delaying Package B because, well, we know why, really. The tender was out. It was the lowest tender. Staff already evaluated all of them.
Yep.
Was no issues with any of them. And to make up a mess about some project they worked on that was late, or they were overdue, or... This is, this is why we go to the legal tendering process. It's legal. So, unless, you know, when you read off that the city does not have to accept the lowest bid, no, it's a good reason not to.
Yep.
There's no reason here. They've done work for the city before. They paid for the city before, and there's been no issues. That's why the manager would do his reviewing and the staff would do the review. They're recommending. And so, I don't know why, this is not the first time we stand up here now. We start talking about different companies. We don't know. We don't like them, you know, not our friends. So, this is, this is competition. Now, it's the first time I recall having three different bidders for paving. We've got some good prices, and now we're, now we're starting to go on about, you know, I don't know if I like that company or not. To me, it's a legal issue. He won it fair and square. His work history has been good, from what I understand. So, there's no reason to not accept it. So, I'll be voting to accept it for sure.
Okay. Counsel Matard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to build on what Counsel Bernard said, and, you know, through this process, you know, I've been involved in, on the committee level. I think it was noted that, you know, a process was followed. There was... I think it was noted that, you know, a process was followed. There was a clear guidelines that were set out, which was lowest price bid that came in, but also factoring other criteria such as, you know, past performance, work they've done. And there was a lot of debate as to whether or not this company, you know, was performing at a level of which we should award this tender. But those parallels were being drawn against what we call the Eastern Gateway Master Plan Big Dig. That is not comparable, in my opinion, to determine whether or not there suffice to do paving. So by all intents and purposes, the staff indicated that they in fact could do that work, and better yet, they committed as the lowest bid. So again, I'm the same way. I'm not sure why we're debating this as anything other than we followed a process. This could have legal implications if we were not to proceed based on those criteria, because I don't think we've outlined any valid reason as to why we would not want to enter into a contract with Birch Hill Construction to do this work. We would be setting a precedent for everything that we do going forward and how we'd be scrutinizing these things unless it's identified by the staff who come back and say, although they're the lowest bid, these are the reasons why we would not support that going forward. So I think the context in a lot of this gets lost in the fact that we have these discussions at the committee level. So I appreciate Counselor Duran wondering. I don't know why we're here. It seemed like we were here at this meeting, and now we're back to this meeting, and because there's some legal implications to some of the stuff and the decisions we make. So I think we had to come back and have a second sober thought about what that looked like, and then from there, make decisions that led us to where we are here today. So I will be supporting the resolution based on the fact that I think we've followed a fair and equitable process, and, you know, with the future, you know, evaluations of how contractors work across the city, that should be documented, and that'll be reflected in future work. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Counselor McCabe?
Thank you. And I agree. I think we have to be really careful here. I also agree, Counselor Twill, that we don't necessarily have to accept the lowest tender, but I think that would come from staff recommendation. Staff knowing whether or not the tender that's coming in is going to be able to meet what they put out for requirements for the tender, and then our job is to be physically responsible for taxpayers, and that's what we do. We take the lowest tender bid. There's also measures in place that if they're not able to meet the requirements of the tender, that things can happen to mitigate or put other things in place if they're not able to meet them. Again, though, another example of really having to be careful about what our job is and not getting into the weeds of picking and choosing contractors for specific jobs and trusting our staff to know that their recommendations can be backed up.
Counselor McAllaire? Oh, no, sorry, Counselor Beck, Counselor McAllaire, and then Counselor Twill.
Yeah. I just want, Counselor Matar stole my primary thought, that I think we are comparing apples with oranges in this particular instance. Just with regards to the scope of the job, the Eastern Gateway was a huge project, Ellen's Creek, I think those are the projects that are being referenced in the past, quite significantly different. I guess the other thing I want to reiterate, too, is my understanding the technical requirements were met of this. There was no issues with any of the technical part of it, so again, no reason to deny it. But I want to reiterate once again that our procurement bylaw is coming up here for review. If we want to get in and we want to see things differently, shaped differently, and what our procurement bylaw looks like, that's the time to provide the input on it as we're going forth with that, one of our 10 priority bylaws that we've identified. So again, the process that we have, I believe, was followed. It was executed. Staff did their due diligence, and I'm going to support the motion.
Counselor McAllaire, then Counselor Twill.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. Just probably going to reiterate a lot of what other councillors have said, but sitting on Public Works Committee and part of what Counselor Twill talked about, you know, as chair, you know, the reality is, in my opinion, we had Package A, Package B. Package A was on construction, same three companies, same three companies, and Package B, Birch Hill Construction, who I understand was formerly M and M Resources. I dug in to understand before, I bet with M and M Resources, talked to staff, and understood that it's already been said, you know, they've done work for the city, and so everything seemed to be on the up and up. And as I said, at the committee level, and I'll repeat here, I think it was a healthy process. We had three good bidders. There's going to be a lot of street work that the city will continue to do, probably have these three bidders at the table again, and everybody's pencil will be a little sharper maybe next time around. Thank you.
Counselor Twill?
One of the key things I said in my previous comments was resume. What I understand, this particular company that's been recommended by senior management has bought a local company out. So the bid, contractor's name on the bid is Birch Hill. It's not anyone else. So I think we've got to be careful there. It's not a former island company. This is an off-island company. And I talked about the resume. Now, I look back in previous bid packages, really clearly states you have to submit a resume. Don't know if that happened in this particular case, in terms of, you know, your corporate history, in terms of paving, what history does this particular company, when it comes to paving, have in this province, or any other province for that matter. Again, if I, if my, what I'm saying is wrong, I apologize, but, you know, talk about resume, that used to be in previous bid packages, clearly stated, you must submit a resume of your work history and the kind of work that you've done previously. Well, if you compare and contrast, the company, the island company, 1949, incredible work history. Compared, I'm not saying this company eventually can't do the work or can do the work, but I haven't seen the resume. Now, if someone has, if a member of this council can say unequivocally, unequivocally, well, yes, this is their resume. Here's the work that they've done. This particular off-island company, that's what they are. If you can share, anyone can share with me what their work history is, what their resume illustrates, please stand up and share right here now, so we can hear it.
Okay. Counselor McCabe, and then Counselor Matar.
What I can tell you, Counselor Twill, is I'm a school counselor, so I wouldn't have any idea of the job Birch Hill or the other competing companies could do. So I could look at resumes till the cows came home, but I don't know whether or not they're going to be able to do the job. But I'm suspecting the manager of the department with an engineering degree might be able to look at that tender and determine that.
Counselor Matar?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to say, I think, you know, we're entering into a very slippery slope here if we are looking as a council to determine the qualifications and resumes of contractors and vendors and whoever we deal with in the business community. I think, again, it goes back to looking at the staff who make these recommendations. You create your reports, you put those reports forward to council. We base our decision, hopefully based on the information they provided and what makes sense, and judging the due diligence was done, and all of those factors are equated. You know, I guess I'm just, you know, I think we're just, we're going down a different pathway here if we are looking to start to do this, because once we open this up, this is where we're going, this will be, well, it will be scrutinized for all RFP contenders that come through the city and through council, is my opinion. So again, you know, I think it's just time we need to move forward, award, or make our decision here this evening, and, you know, there's roads to be paved. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Twill, want to wrap it up? You're the chair?
Well, I did say earlier, City Charlestown doesn't necessarily, and has historically not always accepted the lowest bid when it comes to awarding contracts. I have here, for example, Engineering Service for Sidewalks, Multipurpose Pathways, awarded to CBCL, $82,500. Harborside Transportation was the lowest bid at $62,750, but the award went to CBCL. So didn't accept the lowest bid in that particular case. Here's another one. The Combination Pumper Truck Fire Department, same score, 97, 97. The lowest bid, $1,545,039.96. Recommendation, $1,685,777. Difference of $140,737.04. So that's just, just an example, and there's other examples. Folks, look, I want to go with the tri-tested group. That's just me speaking. Council does what it does, but I have to speak my conscience and what I believe is in the best interests of the city. And I believe that more work needs to be done in terms of, I mean, at the first meeting, the mayor moved the motion. Is that right?
Correct.
You moved the motion. Vote went two and one. Staff said, listen, we want to revisit this? I said, yes. You want to revisit it? I respect our senior staff and the work that they do. And nobody respects their staff more than I do. Does that mean we always disagree? No. And I don't think anyone in this chamber can say they always agree with senior staff. But in this particular instance, folks, that's a lot of money. That is a lot of money, the taxpayers' money. So I want to thank you for hearing me out, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Bernard?
I'm just going to reiterate. The process is a pretty straightforward process for paving streets. So you had three bidders. Staff's job is to evaluate those bidders, companies, make sure they have the right equipment, make sure they can do the job, which they've done. We know all three of these companies can pave, they have all the equipment. I don't see any reason, and it's really unbelievable to me that we sit in here and discuss a tender, a legal tender document that was done and assessed and evaluated properly. So to me, straightforward tender, legal document, you have no reason to not accept it. So again, I'll be moving to accept it.
Counselor Duran, second time.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you for your explanation, Counselor Twill. You know, I read your minutes where the mayor pointed out a couple of points, the Eastern Gateway, and then the Box Culvert. So, you know, to me, I would think, well, that's enough. And when you gave a great explanation about the legalities, and we discussed this in Water and Sewer there last month about, you know, we have to give a tender, we can't say no. So why do we have it in the tendering process? Why do we have it in that we don't have to accept it? And then, once we come back and say, well, we don't have to accept it, no legal says we have to. So why is it there? When you look at all the possibilities of what's going on, I know a couple of years ago, we went out with a third package, and we didn't go to tender. We just threw it out, you know, to another company. So, you know, all these things come up into play now. Now we're all legal and right and got to do the right thing. So I, alongside of you and the mayor, agree that, you know, I don't think this company has enough background or information to do what they're supposed to do. So I won't support it as well, but thank you for your explanation on this tonight.
Questions called? All those in favor? Contrary? Seven, two. Do we have any other resolutions here, Counselor Twill? That's it? Okay, and our next, is it Finance? What's next? Finance? Counselor McAllaire, Finance?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Finance Audit and Tender Administration Committee met June 10th, 2025. The package is in your laptops, I guess, basically. There's three resolutions for your consideration, and if there's questions, comments, I'll do my best to respond to them, and in the absence of not being able to answer them, have Lane, acting CFO, and perhaps or C A O, or any other senior staff, if case arises. Thank you.
The first one?
First resolution, Your Worship, from Finance Audit Tendering and Administration, and it's moved by Counselor John McAllaire, and seconded by Counselor Terry Bernard. Be it resolved that council approve the dispersal of Right of Way on Acadian Drive to the government of Prince Edward Island for school bus drop-off, and that council note that there are no significant operational costs associated with this property, and there will be no funds exchanged as a result of this dispersal.
Pretty easy one. Question? All those in favor? Nine, zero.
Finance Audit Tendering and Administration Resolution Number Two, moved by Counselor John McAllaire, seconded by Counselor Terry Bernard. Be it resolved that council approve the increase in the 25-26 capital budget of $150,000 to fund the purchase of a replacement server for the Vehicle Manager 7.1, used as a database for vehicle identification systems across the city, and that council note the I T department does not have the available capital funding to offset this funding requirement, and that council note that Finance Department will monitor the 25-26 capital expenditures across city departments to identify savings to offset this incremental cost.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Yankup?
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I glanced through the report, because I sit on this committee, and I just wanted to make sure that the changes were put in the report. Remember, we were going to seek extra clarity. We were putting in the report to make sure that council understood that, you know, the whole, the whole thing that this money was in the budget and that wasn't. Remember?
Want to defer to the, Lane?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, yes, through to the deputy mayor to clarify. We did clarify in the report. So, as you recall, there was $100,000 that was provisioned for this at the end of the, for the '24-'25 fiscal year. We were unable to move forward with a tender award at that point in time. The $100,000 became a revised estimate of $150,000. So we had to, so recognizing that the $100,000 from the previous fiscal year wasn't carried forward into the '25-'26 year had to be considered, and then the total cost being $150,000 for what's estimated for this piece of work, that it's a total of $150,000 that we're looking for, and that was the breakdown of it.
Counselor Matar?
Thank you, Your Worship. So this did come through our committee originally. So if I do recall, not only, just want to set the kind of bit of context and the timing. There, in the '24-'25 fiscal, there was money budgeted for this particular initiative. However, by the time the procurement and the things that were going through, we had started going into the '25-'26 budget planning cycle. It was the overlap at that point in time when the vendor had backed out and said they could not perform that work. So therefore, that money essentially disappeared from '24-'25 fiscal, and we did not budget it, obviously, for '25-'26, because we were, we were kind of doing an overlap. So, you know, we didn't spend that money then, and now we don't have it in the '25-'26. So the request here is to reevaluate and add the 150 to the '25-'26 to make up for that shortfall that had happened as a result. And then, of course, the sheer need and working with the chief for this particular software that's needed for the vehicle system, identification system. So that's a little bit more context in helping you make your decision as to whether or not you want to increase the capital budget to move forward. So it wasn't at any fault of anybody's other than... So it wasn't at any fault of anybody's other than the, the vendor kind of backed out during that overlap period. And we, it wouldn't have been caught regardless. So it had to happen earlier, we would have been able to catch that. So it's, it's just something we have to deal with, or we, uh, we don't deal with it, one or the other. So, thank you.
Good. Question called? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, nine, zero.
Third resolution from finance audit, tendering and administration, moved by Counselor John McLeir, seconded by Counselor Terry Bernard. Be it resolved that counsel approved the capital budget transfer the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year as follows. Transfer of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents within the public works department capital budget as per the attached documentation.
Okay, Counsel Matard?
Thank you, your worship. Um, I'll take a line out of Counsel Twill's book here tonight. Did we not already do something like this very similar before, uh, on this particular one, where we were taking money from the Belvedere Roundabout, which, to me, the project is now completed, Chair, like at least, you know, going on almost two years. I'm not sure why we still have money in that account code from a capital perspective and how that keeps continuing to carry over. Now we want to take that to pay out some, um, some invoices that were, I guess maybe it was at the Water and Sewer, we had a similar issue, where invoices were, were, you know, were, they're catching up after a couple of years, year and a half later. So I'm not, you know, obviously if we owe the money, we owe the money to Maritime Electric, but I'm just curious how we get ourselves in this situation where these bills are going unpaid for huge lengths of time. And now we need to go over to a budget from the Roundabout, Belvedere Roundabout, which, in my opinion, closed a year and a half ago, or at least there's no project work there. So if, if we could get an explanation on that, Chair, just a little bit more on, you know, what we're actually shuffling the deck here with money-wise. I think it would help in making the decision. Thank you.
Counsel McLeir?
A fair, fair comment, uh, question, Counselor, Counselor Matard, and, um, was discussed, um, was discussed at finance. Certainly the time lapse and, and delay. And, um, I'll, I'll ask Lane Pino to, uh, CFO Lane, acting to, um, speak to the, um, why it's being, uh, recognized here now and still going to be able to be caught in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Thank you.
Mr. Pino?
Uh, thank you, your worship. So, so again, to clarify, the resolution is, is stating a budget transfer for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, the previous fiscal year. So when we reviewed these, um, expenses and the invoices associated with these expenses, we realized that they're, they're clearly labeled as services provided in the previous fiscal year. And therefore, we could account for it against the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And, um, I don't have the full background on the, the Belvedere Roundabout, but if we, if we review the, um, the twenty-four, twenty-five capital budget provisions, there was still funding available as part of that project. So the budget transfer here actually transfers the, the surplus funds that were in twenty-four, twenty-five to apply against this invoice, but all of, all of this transaction would be reflected in twenty-four, twenty-five and not the current fiscal year.
Counsel Matard?
Thank you. Thank you for that, to Lane. Lane, but how, how are we doing that? Like, are we not closed in our books on twenty-four, twenty-five? So they're still actively open right now to allow us to, to make that transaction, to reflect on that?
Can we just, good to defer? No problem?
I'm sorry. Lane?
Do you want to just verify that, public record?
Sure. So, um, so right now, we're, we're still going through our year-end process. Uh, the books are still open from an accrual standpoint, our accounts payable, like our, our normal invoicing, processing. But if there are, um, costs that are identified still applicable to the fiscal year that we can accrue back, we still have the opportunity to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, oh, oh.
Just one more comment.
Sure, just get up there.
I think what he brings up is a good question, and we talked about it at finance, but this, it's, it's a capital project, it's not the operation, which it would have hit a ray on the head, it was operational, and it changes everything for our operational budget in capital. We're okay.
No, the, the books are still open for the twenty-four, twenty-five operation, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that right, John or Lane?
So I think just to, just to speak to Counsel Bernard, so, so the books are still open from, from both a capital and operating standpoint. But, but as far as the, the capital, it's, it's not a, an impact to our, um, our operating surplus is what, what I think.
Correct.
The clarification there.
Question called? All those in favor? Nine, zero. Okay. Is that it? Counsel, okay. Economic Development, Tourism and Cultural Activities Standing Committee, Counselor Terry Bernard.
Thank you, worship. Um, musical chairs. Worship Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee, um, a few highlights, worship. There's no resolutions for council consideration tonight, your worship, but I do have some highlights. Give me a few minutes, there's, there's a few things to highlight, actually. Number one, your worship, Port Charlottetown welcomed representatives from eleven cruise lines last week on a familieration tour in an effort to demonstrate why Charlottetown should be a must-visit port on their future itineraries. Staff from Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Department assisted the port in selling the destination to these, uh, these representatives. Your worship, with the weather heating up, the summer festival and event season will soon be in full swing. The Summer Slam Basketball Tournament, Andrews Hockey Growth Program's International Hockey Showcase, Island Tides Yoga and Wellness Festival, Diverse City Multicultural Festival, and National Indigenous Peoples' Day celebrations are scheduled to take place over the next month. So a lot going on, your worship. Uh, additionally, musical return to the outdoor stages as part of the Always On Stage, Peaks Warf Summer Concert Series, and sounds on the waterfront programming and the downtown Charlottetown market will resume weekly at the Confederation Landing beginning June twenty-ninth. Uh, some good news here, your worship. Capital, uh, Capital City Canada Day will return to Victoria Park on July first. Don't miss a full day of free, family-friendly activities and live entertainment. Highlights include musical headliners Joel Plaskett, Emergency, and Two Hours Traffic on the Coastal Vibe Stage, a Family Fun Zone, The Taste of Canada and Beyond Food Vendor Zone, a special partnership with Indigenous PEI, including live demonstrations and retail displays. The Understanding Our Past, Reconciling Our Future interview series, and a highly anticipated performance by Cape Breton's Morgan Tony on the largest fireworks, and the largest fireworks display east of Alamo. And your worship, city staff are proud to launch the city's new interactive public art map. And you can, uh, by the way, for anybody, it's in charlottetown.ca-publicart. It's, it's really worth, it's really worth, uh, viewing it. The map, developed in collaboration with the city's economic growth and attraction and the GIS teams, allows residents and visitors to learn detailed information about the fifty-plus works of public art in Charlottetown, including sculptures, murals, and traffic control cabinets in the city's collection, as well as several other pieces owned and managed by our partners. So your worship, any piece of art, any mural, whatever, you go on that website, you'll find out about it. So lots of good information. Um, and your worship, long awaited, next week on June eighteenth, the announcement of our major sporting event that we've been working on for Charlottetown will be made public. I want to thank council for their support to make this a reality. And your worship, I just want to take a minute, um, to thank Sue Fraser for coming in as our interim CAO. Sue, you've done a great job. It's great to have you here. Got the ship straightened out and all ready for Brad when Brad takes over as CAO, so again, thank you very much. You've done a great job.
The rudder's in the water, so it's up to the chief to take it over, I mean, the new CAO. But I did do the bike ride last night with Anna Keen in there, Counselor Bernard, and did some public, uh, art stops along streets and roads and, and on our, um, on our, on the Confederation Trail. It's great, it's looking really good, really good. No, no resolutions? Okay. Next is Human Resources Committee, Counselor Norman Beck.
Yeah, um, just echo Counselor Bernard's words as the Chair of Human Resources. I do want to thank Sue for her time as well here, too. When we look back and we had the departure of Eleanor, our former CAO, who left kind of on short notice, we were sitting around here in this room kind of deciding who, who's out there. And, uh, the collective wishes, the collective decision was, we had someone who, I think I overheard Sue say she's retiring for thirteenth time. I might have, I don't know if I heard that correctly or incorrectly. Might have been third or thirteenth, I'm not sure. We'll go with third. But all, all jokes aside, Sue, we really want to thank you for coming in. It's not an easy seat to walk into, but your cultural understanding, the history, the corporate understanding was invaluable in terms of allowing the transition to go into our new CAO, who's going to be coming in here tonight. We're really excited after the thorough process that we have went through with the selection of our former chief sitting beside the new chief, first female Atlantic chief in the, uh, first female, right? In the, uh, in the, uh, history of the Charlottetown Police Force. And so, you know, I think we always, you know, if we can always find good people from within, it's always an added bonus. And I think we had good people in here to fill in temporarily. We have great people in here, uh, filling in temporarily. I don't know, I didn't, I watched Jen on the TV the other night. For someone who doesn't like being interviewed, she was pretty, pretty savvy. And she handled Louise Martin pretty well, I would have to say. And she was, we don't know how long she's going to be here, but she's going to be here for a while, and it's great to have you aboard, Jennifer, really. And, uh, and Chief, looking forward to coming in and having you sitting in this seat here before long, so. Um, and it was a good day for the Charlottetown Police Force, as we saw in the emails that came out. Seven new hires that are going to be done. We've got our communications person coming in. Uh, so banner day for the Charlottetown Police Force here, so all smiles from the old chief. And for the HR manager, too. That's right, Emily as well. Thank you. Okay, anyway, that's it, I'm done. Any questions? A couple of resolutions? Anything you want?
Counsel Twill?
Uh, thank you for your enthusiastic report, Counselor Beck. Just wondering, with respect to the negotiations with, uh, our unions. I've had an opportunity to talk to some of our employees, and they, you know, I think the standard, uh, negotiations was always two, two and two. And I believe some of the employees, because of the inflation, cost of living, uh, you know, unpredictable financial times, just where we're at with the negotiations. I understand that the, uh, workers are looking to go to three, three and three. I'm just wondering if, uh, has there been any resolution, uh, with respect to those negotiations?
Yeah. Counsel Twill, just advised by the CAO. That's, I'm just, I, I've just been advised by our CAO, Sue Fraser. Contracts are not negotiable in the public forum. I know when we settle it, we, we'll have a signing ceremony, but that's, we're not at that point. Did you want to answer that, Counselor Beck?
Uh, I have no information.
Okay.
So, I don't know anything about that.
Go ahead, Counsel Twill.
Someone tell me where we're at in the process with, with respect to the negotiations? Like, are we, are we coming to a, a final decision?
CAO.
Where it's going to be ratified by council?
Counselor Twill, there's, it's, there's a number of negotiations at play right now with respect to our unions. Our HR manager can speak to specific timelines as far as the unions. But we certainly don't have conversations in council chambers, as you would know, as to negotiating rates of pay and, and, um, terms and conditions of those agreements. This is not the place for that. Um, if you want to know about timelines, that's a whole different conversation.
Yep. We, we'll, we'll leave that with the CAO and, and the HR manager. You can forward an email, correct? Is that all right? Good, okay. Okay, no, no resolutions there, Sue? Okay, first one? Just one second.
Human Resources, first resolution, your worship, is moved by Counselor Norman Beck and seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. The council accepts the amendments to the attached City of Charlottetown Respectful Workplace Policy.
Okay, no questions? Okay, questions called? All those in favor? Pretty easy one, nine, zero.
Uh, second resolution from Human Resources, your worship, moved by Counselor Norman Beck, seconded by Counselor Julie McCabe. Be it resolved that council adopts the new City of Charlottetown Military Leave Policy as attached.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, questions called? All those in favor? Nine, zero, good. Okay, Counsel Matard, you're next.
Thank you, your worship. The Strategic Priorities Communications Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee met on May twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, the draft minutes are included in your package. There is one resolution for your consideration. And we also have a first reading on the bylaw to amend the procedural bylaw. So if there's any questions on the report, uh, please feel free to address those. I, I'll try to do my best, I don't know if we have management, but nonetheless, I'll do my best. Thank you.
Okay. No questions? Do you have a?
The resolution, your worship, from Strategic Priorities Communications and Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee, and it's moved by Counselor Justin Matard and seconded by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the Public Request for Proposals Electronic Communications, the submission of BRAG Communications, Inc., operating as East Link, with an estimated five-year cost of one million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay, Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you, your worship. I was just wondering, is this going to affect our contract with Bell?
Place it.
Like, are, are we not tied in with Bell out there?
Okay, just one second.
With the contract?
Okay, you want to answer?
Thank you for that question, Counsel Ramsey. So it's my understanding that our contract will be coming to an end with Bell. Therefore, we have gone out to tender to do a consolidation of all of our communications within the city corporation. And as a result of that, we have had one submission through BRAG Communication, operating as East Link. And this will, and take into consideration our landlines, our cell phones, internet and other communication channels that we have to consolidate into a five-year, uh, over a five-year period. And there will actually be, as a result of that, an annual savings from our current operational budget as well. So certainly always great when we're saving money in that way and, and continuing to improve upon our services uh, within the corporation, um, from a communications perspective.
It does, it doesn't affect Bell Alliance. That's a, that's a separate contract.
Thank you.
But, but just on that, Counsel Matard? Uh, we did have a meeting, I think you got, you, you and someone else went out with CEO of Canadian Telecommunications about, uh, you know, here we have the opportunity to get more Wi-Fi in the Brighton area. And I think his recommendation was that we should be requesting our new provider to put up some cell towers or receivers for that. And I think I mentioned that to our IT manager. Any thoughts?
No, your worship, I don't have any thoughts on that, but thank you for bringing that forward. Appreciate that, so, or worship.
I just want to state it publicly that the council from the area knows that there's little or no Wi-Fi in the Brighton area. So this is an opportunity that we can speak to our provider, so that's my comment.
Certainly, I mean, if there's opportunity to speak to our providers about cellphone coverage, I'm not, I thought you were going down the road of our, uh, our communication with, uh, with, um,
CEO?
No, with what we're dealing with, with Water and Sewer.
No, 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 that's, that's separate, that's a separate issue. We'll deal with that underwater and sewer.
So I apologize that you're trying to take me down a different pathway here on that topic. So, you know, for certainly if there's opportunities to improve upon our wireless cellular network across the city and different towers and stuff, yes, that's certainly something we should be discussing with our counterparts on that.
There's no coverage in Simmons. It's really bad.
We realize that. I mean, you know, there's been lots of talk about whether that's a bricks and mortar problem or if it's purely, you know, having a cell tower. problem, or if it's purely, you know, having a cell tower set right beside is going to make any difference. I don't know. You know, it is being, and I know the, our manager, Parks, is here, maybe he can address that a little bit more, but I believe it's more related to bricks and, bricks and mortar. Thank you.
But we need the cell towers in that area, so we'll be following up. Okay. Questions called. All those in favor? Nine zero. Any other resolutions? Yes?
Your worship, but we have a first reading to amend the procedural bylaw.
Okay.
To amend the City of Charlestown procedural bylaw 2018-19, to clarify the process for a notice of motion at a committee of the whole, as well as incorporating Housekeeping Amendments to ensure the overall consistency throughout the bylaw. Resolve that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlestown procedural bylaw be read at first time, and that's moved by Counselor Justin McTard, seconded by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff.
Okay.
Thank you. Surprise. I'm going to talk. I was hoping that we would have had opportunity to really sit down and go through this line by line where it wasn't going to take a long time. I just think this is a really important document, and there's some pieces in here that I wanted to tie in, open up some discussion to see about if there's some ways to maybe be more efficient. You know, to start, I think Counselor McTard might have put in a recommendation where typically we only are allowed to ask two questions after a resolution is called. He was hoping to bump that up to three. And I think the reason in our discussions why he wanted to do that is because when you don't sit on particular committees and we're counting on reading reports and minutes in our packages, we're just not able to always have the full picture of the discussion that's happened at specific committee levels. And for me, I've been really thinking and pushing ways to be more efficient in our city council. And the whole section 43, actually 44, the committee of the whole, I would love to be able to initiate some conversation and some discussion with, with us in here to see if this would ever be something that we might want to consider while trying to, to be more above board and to be doing what we're supposed to do. If you look at the section 42.2 under A, you know, with committee of the whole, you could receive updates on ongoing projects initiatives that have cross-departmental and citywide impact, including our external, external presentations, our budget deliberations, our bylaws and policies, and our plans and strategies. When I look at those four pieces, that is our job as a council. That is our role as an elected official for City of Charlestown is to be taking care of those four areas. So, you know, the committee structure, although that's been how it's been forever and ever and ever, is a really redundant way of doing business, in my opinion. We have, all have our little committee. We come in here, we give our report, we sit, we meet, and then we come to council where the final decision has to be made anyway. And then we spend a long time going over the same questions with our staff because if you don't sit on a committee, you're expected to come in here and know half, two pages of minutes what you're voting on. So for me, it's the accountability piece around having that opportunity to be engaged and be involved in a discussion. When we talk about, I know I have two minutes left, your worship.
Go ahead.
The committee of the whole, it involves all of us together as one committee. It provides us an informal platform for in-depth discussion and review, and it would precede our formal council meeting that we would have tonight. You know, we all get to be there, we all get to ask questions. And I was, you know, tonight we had the, the tendering issue. We've had closed session around land issue. It takes forever for things to get done in talking with staff. By the time it gets through the committee, it gets to the next committee, it comes back to council where that decision has to be made anyway. It provides an informal setting so we can openly ask dialogues. It doesn't have to be a limit on how many questions you have at a committee of the whole meeting. It gives us a chance to really understand what we are trying to do. The committee of the whole can't make final decisions, that's the place for our regular council meeting. It serves as a preparatory forum. The benefits, it'll encourage collaborative decision-making and allow for comprehensive issue exploration. It increases our transparency as a group. One night, a month, everybody can watch us on YouTube because I know that's what people are sitting home doing, they just can't wait to see us on T V. It does allow for faster decision-making processes, so instead of having to go through and go back to committee and come back to council, it will allow things to get done in a little faster, faster means. I just want to want to, so it'll also, it reduces cost. You know, we have all these committee meetings, we take staff in, we're buying lunches. This is a way where we're reducing some, some more finances. We've found out at budget time that, where do we cut money? Here's one way. It simplifies our structure, enhances public understanding of the municipal organization, it decreases redundant discussion, how many times you have to hear an application, then you have to come back and hear an application. I think one of our directors went to four committees before it came to council, and I was on three of those, so I heard it three times before, I was really, really well-prepared for that one. From a political standpoint, I think we have a stronger voice as for our wards and for the people we represent, because we get to be engaged in all the conversations across the boards. And we will have a sense of how that impacts our areas. I still think that we can have representatives for different departments, we could have spokespeople so we don't necessarily have to lose your chairmanship. You could still be elected by his worship if we'd ever agreed to consider something like this. So I guess when I've been trying to think about, are committees an effective use of our time and our resources? Do they allow us to make really strong, informed decisions? Many of the same issues discussed, or re-discussed, Finance Tonight was another example. I do think it can create annual savings, it can reduce committee meeting expenses. I believe it's more efficient. I think we have seen with the M G A, everything we do is open and transparent. It's definitely something that can help bring us closer to identify priorities that are tied to our strategic plan. It can provide a clear roadmap for everyone to know where we're going and the plan on how we're going to get there. I don't have the answer to how it's going to work and work well, but I'd love to have the opportunity to discuss is this something that we think could help us move for in a more efficient means. Thank you.
Counselor Beck and then Counselor McTard.
All right. Thanks, your worship. I guess I just have two questions. First question is, are we bound, when we're going through first reading, are we bound by five minutes first time, three minutes second time? Or can we have?
That is, that is the process, but we're, we're trying to be a little liberal in terms of.
No, no, I'm just talking about, do we, like, when we're going through, because Counselor McCabe might say something, it may prompt an idea, but it may have already spoken two times, that means I can't speak again. No, I'm just asking, is that?
Go ahead.
Is that the format?
Well, we'll just see how it goes. We'll roll it out. We'll, we'll go with the roll.
No process.
Yeah, there is a process, but just go and we'll see how it works.
There is flex, there is flexibility around that?
From the proceeding, yeah.
All right. Okay. So the other thing is, what would happen with, how, how would we come to any kind of decision on what proposal Counselor McCabe might be putting forth? Like, would that be something that we would discuss at a later time? Because it's a, it's a fair, it's not an insignificant change. And we've had the present, presentation of the ideas here tonight. We really haven't had much time to absorb what the benefits are, what the restraints might be, and whether it's even something that we want to entertain.
So what we have in front of us is the committee of the whole proposal.
Right.
And a proposal from Counsel McTard, instead of speaking two times, speak three times. That's, that's what we're focused, any, any other information that comes to the floor under this discussion, we'll go back to the standing committee to make another proposal.
So we're not voting tonight here on first, we're not approving first reading?
Yeah, we're voting on section 40, the changes that are being made, and if I'm incorrect.
The amending by law.
Yeah.
Because what will happen is after this discussion, there's no discussion in second reading. So our only time really to discuss this is during first reading. So, so if, if we've got something like this, because basically what Counselor McCabe is asking is to eliminate committees.
Correct.
So that's a major departure from what we, from what we have.
It's just, this, this is not about amending the committee structures. This is just about what's in our proposal. Like, if you, if you wish to add more, that we'll go back to the committee, we'll vote on this, and then any more discussion that's being suggested tonight, we'll go back to the standing committee for strategic priorities, communication, and intergovernmental cooperation. There's a process.
I know, and, and I guess that's what I'm saying, but in this process, we make reference to councils, and we make reference to special meetings, regular council meetings, committee meetings, committee chairs, all this stuff. She's recommending that that, she's proposing that that be removed, that we don't look at committees anymore.
That's right.
So that's a change in our procedural bylaw.
That's right.
So I don't know if we can have that discussion here. Could go on for quite a while if we're going to be having that discussion as to whether we're going to have it. So, you know, there are some, there are some other things in here that, you know, I've, they're smaller questions, there may be some questions, but what she's proposing is quite significant, quite significant.
But what we have in front of us is, is the committee of the whole, instead of, on the fourth Tuesday, having a special meeting, it becomes a committee of the whole with what it'll deal with, internal, external presentations, budget deliberations and so forth.
No, the fourth Tuesday is a special, special meeting.
No, this, this committee of the whole will be, that's, that's the intent, is that?
I don't think that's, that's not outlined there.
So we're creating, okay.
So that, that's where I guess where I think we're in, I think we're into a, I don't think we're, I'm not prepared here, I don't think there's enough things going on here. I think there's moving parts that we're not, not quite ready to vote on yet. And I don't want to get into a thing where we rush into first reading here tonight, and then we come back the next time, we are second reading, there's no discussion, and we're left with what?
But.
And we haven't really, we haven't really had a good, frank, open discussion about it.
But what Counselor McCabe is proposing is a whole, whole, a wholesale change of the committee structure. That's separate from what's being discussed here tonight.
No, she's changed, she's proposing, oh, I'll, maybe I'll let Counselor McCabe speak to that.
Again, I.
My understanding, if I could finish.
Go ahead.
My understanding is that we would have a different format. We would have our regular council meeting, we would have our special meeting, and then we would have committee of the whole. There'd be no more of these committee meetings, so we get all that information out of committee of the whole. So committee of the whole would be part of our regular process. Currently, under this, our regular process is, I was outlined there, first, second Tuesday of the month and fourth Tuesday of the month, in our procedural bylaw. So what is being talked about here tonight is quite a different, it's quite a departure from what we, from what we have.
So, go ahead.
So I don't know if we're, I don't know if we're quite ready to, as much as I would love to see the procedural bylaw amended and updated, I, I think because of what was talked about here tonight and because of the, I think the wholesome discussion we have to have about it, I don't think we're, I don't think we're at the point where we can be even entertaining this first reading here tonight, be my, my opinion.
Yeah. Just to clarify, C A O Fraser, so if we add this committee of the whole, is it to replace all the standing committees? Is that, am I getting that under?
That's not what you said.
No, that's, okay, just clarifying.
Your worship, there's a couple of things at play here. The, the document that's in front of everyone now is mostly housekeeping amendments, as well as some, as it lists at the top, some consistency throughout the bylaw for notion of motion, notice of motion, those types of things. Adding committee of the whole is just another layer. It's not, it's not indicated in here that that would replace all of our standing committees. So the reason why this is in front of you now as is, we needed to get a pulse on council as far as what kind of wholesale changes you need. If it's significantly altered, as in what Counselor McCabe is suggesting, you're probably going to want to do a deferral and have a fulsome conversation as council as to what you want to see happening structurally, because ultimately, as it stands right now in the M G A, the mayor does the work with regards to establishing committees and that type of thing. So it's a lot more complicated if we're going to remove all standing committees. And so if that's the agenda here of the majority of council, then we probably should do a deferral. Am I correct in that, Tracy?
Yes.
So, who wants to move the deferral? Okay, let's, let's just, hold on, hold on. Counsel McTard.
Thank you for that. You know, I guess when, in coming here this evening, my, my understanding was we'd have this one opportunity to talk about it. And I think in having discussions with Counselor McCabe, tonight was an opportunity to express our feelings, our thoughts about committee of the whole, and, and addressing a lot of the things that Counselor McCabe indicated. It wasn't to come here tonight and say, we're making that decision here tonight, by any means. We need to get that conversation going. There's not a mechanism to allow us to have that conversation. So I think what Counselor McCabe is asking, or if she's not asking, I'll ask, is how do we get that mechanism to have this council come together and start to hash that out as to whether or not that's something that we want to incorporate into the procedural bylaw for committee of the whole? And then from there, obviously, we would make further changes. There's reference into here of 44.2 that talks about the committee of the whole, it's a reference in there. I don't know if by virtue of that being in there, does that mean we already can decide if we want to have committee of the whole and remove standing committees and just have a committee of the whole and a regular, regular meeting of council and the committee of the whole to bring everybody together? I want to, you know, say I do support all the comments that Counselor McCabe brought forward regarding the benefits to commu, to committee of the whole. You know, I think we see it time and time again, we see it here a couple of times this evening, just in, by virtue of not being in other committees. And we're, we're coming here this evening, we're asking the same questions that were already asked. We always see people chuckles, oh, I've asked those questions, 10 questions already at the committee level. And it's just repeating that. People might say, well, you have the opportunity to go watch the other committee meetings online. That's great, I do, but I don't get the opportunity to ask questions in there. So, and, and to attend all those wouldn't be, wouldn't be feasible. So I think there's, there's a lot of merit in considering this, it's just considering it and having a wholesome discussion about it. How do we get that discussion is what was being asked here? And I just want to finish by saying, you know, I thought it was interesting, I attended a session the other night with Gordon McIntosh, who, the session was on developing positive council staff relations. And it was interesting, the majority of his whole speech was all about committee of the whole. And he even used, it went as far as to say, they're awesome. So like, it's, he said it's a shift that's happening. We're moving away from standing, we're the committee of the whole, it's where you get your most benefit, it's where you get your most efficiency, and, you know, decision, or you get everybody informed and can have comments that are happening. It was just amazing that, you know, we're, we're trying to talk about this, and this was what was being presented to us. So again, how do we get that discussion to move forward? If it's, if we sign off on this tonight, now we can't have that out there, then I'm not prepared to sign off on this tonight, because I'd like to have that discussion.
Okay. Counsel McTard.
See where we go. Thank you. First of all, thank Counselor McCabe. I know she's been talking about this for quite a while, and so she's, hasn't given up on it. So good for you, Counsel McCabe. For me, from my understanding of this, and committee of the whole we used to have, and they were pretty useful, they were very useful actually, and there were, there were closed doors, and so any question was asked on any issue. But it was usually certain issues that come up that one had flushed out. And I think the process right now, and I'm trying to get through my head, the process we have now is items go to the committees. The committee's role is to flush those out and then bring that information back here. Council asks all the questions, that's what the discussion is. And they ask the questions, and then the decisions are made from the answers you get. That's why we have staff here. If we get stuck on a question, staff can answer it. I think by going to the committee of the whole, from my understanding of the way this would be set up, you're basically having council night like we're having tonight, only you're going to have all your questions answered. So come to the night we're supposed to report to the public, I don't think it's going to be any question to ask. I think the committees have to go and do their work, flush out what the issues are. It comes to council, it's, it's all in the minutes of the package. If there's anything that, that you're not quite sure, you can go and review it, which is, which is something we've never had before. But I'm just not sure yet why, you know, if we're going to have this Committee of the Whole every, every Fourth Tuesday of the month, and it's to go over every committee and every question, that's what we're doing tonight. So it, to me, it's, it's almost redundant, we're going over things twice. So, so if I'm understanding it right, I'm not going to say it's a waste of time, because it's probably not, I mean, the information is good, and I do think that what we're doing here tonight is basically what's being asked for, only you want the information before that. And, and so, right now, like I say, if, if I'm understanding it right, I just don't think it's, it's productive.
Council McCabe, and then Councilor Beck.
Thank you. So a couple of things, and I agree with you, it can be redundant, see, the Committee of the Whole, in my opinion, and this is why it will be good to hopefully get a deferral where we can have more discussion on this, but that Committee of the Whole would be the time where we would have the questions, the discussion, the debate. When we get to regular council meeting, they're going to come in, they're going to read the resolutions, we've already done it, and we're ripping through those, and it's just efficient, it's, it doesn't need to be redundant and be repeated, people can watch Council of the Whole meeting on that whatever Tuesday, and they're going to see all the discussion one night, rather than trying to flip around and figure out when Strategic Priorities is meeting, and Economic Development's meeting. Anyway, I would love more opportunity for discussion, I'd never thought, I was going to come here tonight and push these, this in, I wanted the opportunity to say, can we at least look at having more discussion? And an example, Your Worship, you said, you know, even at the start a few minutes ago, well, this would replace the, the Fourth Tuesday special meeting, and that's my understanding, and Tracy said, no, that's really, that's not what it is. So already, we have people not really sure, and not really clear on what we're voting on, so if that's not indicative that we need more time to have opportunity to discuss it, again, I, I'm going to put a motion on that we defer this.
I'll second that.
So there's a resolution to defer the amendment to this procedural bylaw?
I'll second that.
And it's seconded, so anyone that wants to speak to the deferral, Councilor Beck.
Yeah, like, I think there's some things in here, just to go back to the Committee of the Whole, something that we didn't have in our procedural bylaw, when we brought, when it was brought to Strategic Priorities about sixteen, eighteen months ago, we ended up slotting it in under Standing Committees. It wasn't part of our procedural bylaw, so this is just kind of incorporating it in to give us the ability to do that, that's one part of it. The other part, what Councilor McCabe is talking about with regards to the structural change, that's a difference in terms of how we're conducting our business, kind of going to what we would be spending time in different areas. Council meetings wouldn't be as long, Committee of the Whole meetings would be taking up more time, and hopefully, we would get really efficient at those. But I, I think in the interest of just the short conversation we've had here tonight, I think it's really demonstrated that we're not ready to fully adopt at first reading, because that's basically where we're, if we adopted here tonight, it's effectively adopted, right? And I don't think that any of us could confidently say that we have a procedural bylaw, based on the limited discussion that we've had here tonight, that we're ready to go with one. And the other part about it is, there's a couple of other things. I think when we talked about updating this, and I think potentially, if I might be mistaken, but I think when we talked about updating our code of conduct, that they would almost be single item agendas, that we would be discussing only them, not in the midst of all a bunch of other resolutions, to allow us for that focused time. And I would suggest that even that, if we have it in a Committee of the Whole format, we can have that discussion. It would be open, it would be transparent, it would be televised, we're not looking to go back to the old days where we would conduct a meeting in a closed session. But I think for us to have a wholesome-
Point of order?
Yeah.
Can you just, can you just stand up, please? Council Bernard.
Okay, point of order, we're going down a, a road here, this is on the deferral, is it not?
I am.
So, so you're talking about Committee of the Whole, you're talking about a whole bunch of other things than the deferral. Let's just stay focused on the deferral, we're, we're all talking extra time, overtime, can we not just do what we're supposed to, stay within the time, stay within what we're asking, and, and take a vote, and move on?
Yeah, that was, I was leading to my point, that that's the reason why we should be looking at a deferral, so there's all kinds of reasons for looking, and I would, I will vote in favor of the deferral.
Okay, Council Bernard, second time.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, Your Worship, I'm not sure if there's a need to defer it, I think, I think we can pass the procedural bylaw, I think you still have this conversation, and if you want to make those changes, because we don't know if the majority of council does or doesn't, but if we do, I think you can still come back and amend the procedural bylaw, you can add it in, so I don't think you have to defer it. Pass it now, because this has been waiting, if council desires to want to go through some of them changes, then we'll bring them through and, and amend the procedural bylaw.
Again, to clarify, we're adding another layer, as the CAO stated, and it would be a Committee of the Whole, which would allow us to discuss issues that are outlined in the, in the, in the proposed amended changes. Council Bernard.
So just so I'm clear, if we, if we don't accept the deferral and vote on the resolution, or the first reading, is that going to allow us to have that conversation we want to have, or is it just going to die slow death, and we're not going to have that conversation?
We've, we've changed the procedural bylaw.
Yeah, I, I think, I'm, I need one trigger that's going to trigger the conversation, and I think by not, by not supporting the, the, or not moving forward, or moving forward with the, with the referral, will allow that conversation to happen. I, I don't think we'll have the conversation if we don't, if we don't do it.
No, no, the, the deferral, yeah, just, again, to clarify, this, this amendment, correct me Tracy, if I'm wrong, or CAO Fraser, if we allow this to go ahead under Section forty-four point two, forty-four point three, it allows us to create a Committee of the Whole. And, and if you look at information sessions, they become, actually, educational sessions now become information sessions. So we can have this wholesome discussion on, on, on changes to the procedural bylaw, or anything that is outlined in those areas that we looked at, and if you looked at it, it's on page, digital page.
Yeah, but I think what I'm getting at is, if we, if we go ahead and vote on it, I don't think we'll have that discussion.
Ah.
I think what we need, for me personally, if the deferral will allow us to go have that discussion, then I support the deferral, so it's that simple for me. Yeah, thank you.
So, if we have a question, questions go.
Questions go, okay. All those in the favor, in favor of the deferral of the amending, amending the procedural bylaw, please raise your hand. Defer, okay, all those against? Nine to three, so, sorry, six to three, so the deferral goes ahead. So the deferral goes back to, just one second, back to, back to the strategic priorities? Yep.
Thank you, Your Worship. So if, if the deferral, so that procedural bylaw will come back to our Standing Committee, which then we will work towards engaging upon this discussion that we want to have. And again, at this point, this discussion, might committed there and decide, status quo, let's move forward there, or we've all come somewhat collectively and said, these are some changes that we're looking to do, and we can incorporate those in, and come back to a first reading with those incorporated changes, so we're not going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, or getting shelled, and we'll deal with it down the road. That's my, I hope to, to take away from here tonight, so back to our committee with that, that kind of direction moving forward.
Yes, do you want to sum up? Okay.
Yeah, just, just a quick question, so when it goes back to Standing Committee, we could, we can go and participate in that committee, can we not, and offer our thoughts at that time, or we, is that a, is that a standard procedure that we could do?
Yeah, the chair can invite you to speak at the meeting, that's, you've done that before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Council McCabe.
I know, I know, the CAO would like to speak, but what I would like to ask, maybe Chair, is you could have a discussion of setting a meeting where we could come together as a Committee of the Whole, rather than having to come into your committee to have a discussion to see if we want to have a Committee of the Whole. Does that make sense?
Well, it, it will be an open meeting, and it will be live streamed. Oh, you will be.
Your Worship, can I just make a suggestion for us moving forward? I mean, this is near and dear, I think, to everyone's hearts with respect to a significant structural change, so it might warrant a conversation at a special meeting, whatever we're calling these other meetings every month, now, they're not special when they're every month, but those, that other meeting that's not the council meeting, that should be on the agenda, and then everybody is, it's on the agenda, and, and you get to have a full conversation about it, and you're not waiting to find out when Strategic Priorities meets again.
The, the deferral will go to the next special meeting, it doesn't have to go back to committee, the deferral will go to the next special meeting.
All I was going to add to that was exactly, I would, at the committee level, I would have requested a special meeting of our committee to invite everybody there for that period, so whether it's there, or just in another form, that's what my intentions were, not to invite you in for my hour lunch meeting-
Yeah.
-on a case by case, who could make it. This is going to be, try to get the majority, if not everybody, and we'll have the discussion, we'll take it from there, and wrap this up with a nice bow at the end, and see where we go.
So our new, our new CAO will put aside a meeting date, just to discuss the deferral of this amendment to the procedural bylaw, correct? Good, okay, no, we, we, we can move on.
One item. One item.
On this?
That is a single item.
It'll be one item if you want it. I like to do business, but anyways, okay. Okay, now we're going, any other?
I'm going to see if you can, is that one item?
I have something here under, is that it? That's it?
Oh, is it?
Okay, Council McCabe, Protective and Emergency Services.
Thank you, I don't have anything to report. I don't have anything to report, because Councilor Beck said my report, no, I'm just joking. I, I do want to start with thanking Sue, our CAO, for great leadership these past couple of months, as well as acknowledge and thank Chief McConnell. This will be his last meeting as our Chief of Police, as he's going to go into the new role of our CAO, and take his years of leadership experience from the Police Department, and lead us in a really progressive way here at the city, so excited to have you, Brad, or CAO, soon to be, and work under your leadership and vision. And on the same note, I, I'm excited for the incoming interim Chief Jennifer McCarron. Jen's been with the Charlestown Police for many years, I've known her for many years, and as Councilor Beck said, it, we kind of made history with having the first Chief of Police female, not that she would matter, gender didn't have anything to do with it, she's going to do a great job, but it is kind of cool to have that. We met May twentieth, the minutes are in your package, we have no resolutions for consideration, any questions, I'll do my best to answer. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilor Twill.
I just want to reference the chat update that the Chief of Police had referenced in your report. Do we have, I guess what I would like to see is what the province was offering in terms of, you know, resources, personnel, funding, funding possibilities, and just wanted to see exactly, you know, where, where they, they felt that the city, you know, should be a participant, and city chief, and the mayor said, no. So what I'd, I'd like, I'd like the information from the province, what the province was actually offering, so I, I can view it for myself as well. There's no question about it, drugs is a major issue in this city, fentanyl, crystal meth, I hear crystal meths all over the streets, but, you know, every day, there's a new revelation about drugs in our city. So do we have that chief, or to, to the chair, to the chief, do we have exactly what the province, the provincial government was actually offering, the city of Charlestown, and can we view that as a council? Members of council?
Council McCabe.
Yeah, I just want to remind us that it, again, you know, we were kind of pulled into the political part of an operational thing, if Chief McConnell is comfortable, or maybe he has to come back with information that you're looking for, Council Twill, I just, it was an update that was provided at committee level, based on the political arena that happened between the province and the city, unfortunately, on a, on a pretty significant issue, and that Chief McConnell did a really good job explaining their perspective from where they were coming from as a city police force. Did you want to take that back and come back to him in an email, or are you wanting to address that now?
Chief, CAO, hail to the chief.
Thank you, Your Worship, Chair, and through to Council Twill. You know, first, I want to acknowledge that certainly drugs is, is a priority for the city of Charlestown, and it is a concern of residents, we know that, and I think what the spirit of the minister's proposal in offering resources towards JAD was sincere enough. However, there's logistical and, and boots-on-the-ground challenges to deliver on that, and creating an expectation that we just, at the current time, just could not meet. And, and I think if you look at it, respectively, among the other police services, well, Somerside, who is, who is, who I'm told is, is, has agreed to take part, does not have the resources currently to participate, at least to the fall. So, you know, this is, these decisions are made in isolation of the fact that we're just in the need to drug work, we're also in the need to have boots on the ground to police areas, like the outreach center, area of influence, and the downtown, which are rising demands. So when we factored in all of this, and actually what we can accomplish, and it's, it's one thing to have a conceptual idea of it, but, you know, what we have not seen is any plan from the provincial government that would actually make sense at the current time for Charlestown to participate, or, or build an expectation, and divert, divert scarce resources to extend our, our services beyond our city boundaries, when, you know, we're just currently not in a position to do that. But I think what we've said is that there's other things also to consider here, you know, we have a number, currently have a number of funded positions through the province that, you know, that are short-term contract positions. These, these positions that were offered, and we have not received a formal offer, other than potentially a couple of positions for the JAD, is what that looks like in form of long-term planning, and what the commitment is there, what are the fine details about who's incurring overtime and court costs? There's an idea here, I'm not sure there's a plan. And so respectively, we, we said we're just currently, until there's more answers, and more issues surrounding the bigger policing issue and resources of our police services, that we're just not in a position to participate. And however, if some of those issues were resolved and questions were answered, then we'd open that door, but we have not, we have not received any answers to those questions.
Council Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. The only issue I've ever had with it, and I mean, if, you know, if the chief reviews it, and, and it's, and the information comes to council, and it's, it's not a good idea for us to join, great, but I think when you have a request from a level of government coming to another level of government, they're not asking staff to make the decision, they're asking council to make the decision. Staff would bring the information to us, and if it's a no, then, then we'll say no. And that's the only, that's the only issue I've had with this, is that, you know, the only reason we found out about it, it come up on the floor of the legislature. So usually, council makes a decision, the mayor writes a letter, the mayor has the authority to write the letter after council makes a decision, so this is something we knew nothing about, I, I haven't heard a thing about it, and I believe, you know, the federal government doesn't call down and ask the mayor to do something that doesn't come to council, or the provincial government. So everything we do here ends up being an operational issue, everything we do. So this here, to me, although it, it does end up being operational, and Brad outlined good reasons why we're not, it's not a good idea for us to participate right now, I'm fine with that. But what I'm not fine with is the decisions are being made that we don't know anything about, and that's not the way council's supposed to operate. So that's, it's, it's more of a concern for me, just basically that the process here is you have a level of government asking another level of government, will you join this? And so it's not up to staff or the mayor alone to make that decision to send back, say, no, we're not, it's, it's council's collective, so, anyway.
Council Twill.
Yeah. So, so again, you know, thank you for your response, Chief, but, but I, I guess what I would, you know, I'd like to dig a little deeper, all due respect, and what I'd, I'd like to know, okay, the minister, the minister discussed in, in the Legislative Assembly, he was in the press, okay, just put down on a piece of paper, just on a one page, okay, we are willing to contribute, let's say, two police officers, four police officers, this amount of funding, resources, maybe, maybe, maybe a place for the JAD team to work at it. I, I don't know, I mean, yes, logistics, and how much the city of Charlestown would be contributing financially, and, and as you say, there was no plan, if I understood what you said, there was no plan. So, and maybe if I'm wrong, if I misinterpret what you're saying, there's no plan, okay. So let's, let's just put it all together, so that we, as, as Council Bernard- So, let's just put it all together, so that we, as Council Bernardses, we as a council can see what they're saying, so we have that comfort ourselves. We have to have that comfort ourselves, to ensure that, you know, when we're being approached on the street, okay, well, the city of Charlestown's the only police agency that's not involved in the JAD team, well, we can say, okay, well, here's why we're not involved, or here's why we should be involved. But I would just like to have that, that information, you know, in a point form, itemized, and that if, if it's not sufficient, or if it's not enough, it's not enough personnel, it's not enough resources, not enough apparatus, we can go back to the problem, say, here's what you need to put on the table. I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Right? Here's what you need to put on the table, but I just, for my own peace of mind, I'd like to have that information, and, like Counsel Bernard said, and I agree with him, you know, that this, this has to come from council. Thank you.
Counsel McKay.
Thanks, you know, and I think we've had discussion, I think, once the mayor signs any kind of documentation, I don't disagree. We should be briefed, we should understand what's going on.
There's a fine line there, there's a fine line.
I'm just saying, this is what we're hearing today, is if people had had the information, we probably wouldn't be sitting here questioning the whole thing. So, it is important to have that communication piece, and I just want to remind us too, that they, police are under a different act, they're not kind of under the city of Charlestown telling them how to do their operations, they do follow the police act, so we can't really tell them what they can and can't do on a day-to-day, right? Am I right? Or you follow the police act or something, like, do we give you direction on how to do your policing job? I thought, from the H R, we talked about...
You asked the Chief?
Yeah, I am, just for clarification, I should maybe say that, but I'm pretty confident that we, again, that you have your own ethics and rules that you follow, or acts.
Your Worship Chair, certainly, you know, police operations have to be independent from council, you know, council does certainly have a place in setting priorities and through committee, and, you know, obviously, we know that drugs is a priority in our city, but, you know, these are, these are operational issues on very complex, you know, very complex environment, and so, you know, you know, in hindsight, you know, I guess we could all say, communicated, this could have been probably communicated better, and I'll acknowledge that, but in all fairness to the situation, this was something that come up several months ago, and, you know, it was, seemed to be an operational issue. You know, I certainly take ownership of a lot of the content and wording in that letter, which was, which was sent back to the province, and for good reason, like, these are real concerns that have to be met, because, you know, resources are just too valuable to be diverted without very thoughtful consideration. But point taken from council, and certainly, you know, we'll...
Well, I thought it was from one office to another office, that's what I thought it was, and then, of course, it came up in the House, which I thought there was a breach there between the two offices, when you, it's a letter to the office, the mayor, the Chief assisted with, the Chief assisted with the response because of his background in this field, so I didn't want to have that, because if we were to take that letter here, it would be a public discussion, because we can't do that in a closed meeting. So, I didn't want to do that, because we thought we were office to office, and then he comes up in the House and says, they don't want to join, which I thought was a breach of a confidence that I was trying to build. We are planning to have a meeting with them to go over this issue, but we'll wait to see how that turns out. Deputy Mayor.
I think that, oh, sure, I do think that this type of an item could very much fall under a closed session, because it would be under a contract negotiation, so I, you know, whether we should have known, or whether we shouldn't have known, I'm kind of with Counsel Bernard, I think that, you know, yes, it was operational, but everything's operational, and if we, if we can have that ability to see around corners and know that it's going to be politicized, you know, council should be informed, but I do think that this would have been one of those types of things that could have fallen under closed session, under one of those sections, but, anyhow, it's over with now, and I'm sure we'll do better next time.
Yep. Okay. Counsel Bernard, you want to... Second time?
I was going to say, had it went to Police Committee, it'd been in the minutes.
Yeah. What's that?
Even, like, I don't think it was discussed at the Police Committee, if it had been in the minutes, we would have had the information, we could have all, you know, but anyway, it's one of those things.
But I, again, I give Chief Brad McConnell kudos to respond to the offer, be understanding his knowledge of the situation, of the fentanyl, of the oxycontinants on the streets, and what we're doing as a police force, and I know that, Chief, you've asked for the extra bodies, and they've said, yeah, we're going to get those bodies, like, we're asking, and we don't get them. We are asking, we don't get them. So, this back and forth, it's been going on, Counsel Twill, since the Outreach Center was established on 241 Houston, and then moved out to 15 Park Street. Counsel Twill. Wrap it up. Yeah, and that's why, Mr. Mayor, I've been asking, you know, consistently, month after month, under Mr. Matar's report, and when Mr. Beck was Chair of Strategic Planning Priorities, give us some minutes of, or give us some minutes of the meetings, formal meetings, that the city's held with the province, give us copies of correspondence, never got it. So, it's hard for us to be informed as a council, when we're not getting that information, and when you reference...
No, I'm going to end this, because you know what, we never got minutes, and the Deputy Mayor, no, hold on, the Deputy Mayor and Counsel, Counselor Beck attended, and I, and so did the Chief, and so did our former C A O, and I asked, who's taking the minutes?
Right.
Don't worry. Did we ever get minutes? So, I don't know what minutes you're talking about, Counsel Twill. What minutes?
What about correspondence with the province? There's other correspondence that are taking place.
I, I don't know where you're going with this, this comes up every time. Okay.
Order to keep moving, because this has nothing to do with the JAD discussion, or anything to do with my police report.
It's another issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Twill. Yeah. So, we're going now to Parks Recreation Leisure. Counsel Kevin Ramsey.
I'll try and be short, because somebody's like to drag this thing on here, night after night.
Let's get right to it.
The Parks and Recreation met Friday, June 6th, at 12:00. The approved minutes are in your package, we have five resolutions, Your Worship, our manager, Mr. Frank Quinn, is here, if I can't answer the questions, he will certainly help me out, thank you very much.
Okay. Do you want to read the first resolution?
Your Worship, Parks Recreation Leisure Activities.
Oh, do you have a question, Counsel Twill, on the report? Okay. On the report, Counsel Twill, can you just stand up, please?
Well, it's with respect to the recent events that have taken place here in the last weekend, the Joe Gis Park, you know, we had, we had someone die in the Joe Gis Park, and, you know, residents are concerned about what has transpired, you know, was that person, how did that person die, how did this, how did this happen, why did it happen? I brought up the last council meeting, I've been consistent again about activities that are taking place in the Joe Gis Park, what's the plan to deal with it? I can tell you, I've talked to parents and grandparents that will not allow their grandsons and daughters, and sons and daughters to frequent the Joe Gis Park anymore, because they don't feel that it's safe. We had that tragedy take place down at the Joe Gis Park, and, like, what are we doing here, folks? Like, what is the actual plan to making that part of the city safe? And that's, that's a Parks and Recreation venue, so where are we?
Okay. Counsel Ramsey.
Well, I know it's bad, and we have a role to play, but so does police, and we're not sending our people in there, like, to break everything up, and, you know, we're in there to clean up, and look after the parks the best of our ability, but it has to go through two or three committees, as Counsel McKay said too, like, Public Works goes in, helps out, Parks and Recreation looks after, but they're responsible for, and then Charlestown Police. So, it's a, it's a tragedy, if something happened, but there's other parks around too, that there's issues everywhere, and, you know, our police, I must say, they're right on top of things, and our Parks and Recreation are right on top of things. We're in there, we're cleaning up every day, and what else we can do, unless we have someone there stationed right there, and moving people on 24/7, I don't think we have the whole resources to do that, Your Worship, thank you.
Okay, Counsel Matar.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Counsel Twill, for raising awareness to the issues that are occurring down at Joe Gis Park. I will say, I'm actively working directly with the Chief and with the manager of Parks, regarding a number of issues and complaints that I continually receive from that area, in particular to, you know, the unfortunate event that happened last week as well, or allegedly happened there, because I had no concrete understanding of what that was, but nonetheless, you know, we've identified that the area is becoming increasingly problematic, you know, likely due to the nice weather and people coming out. I'm also, you know, just waiting to hear from the manager of Parks regarding some of the fencing that's needed in the area, plus some of the area, there's a bit of, I'll call it a storm water drainage area there, where there's some very high grass, so we're looking to have that all cut and trimmed down. It's an area where people are frequently, you know, hanging out in that area, and, you know, leaving garbage and debris, so we're addressing those. So, just to give you an idea of kind of where we are with some of that, there's, I'm actively, on a daily basis, working with our Chief of Police and his staff, sending information that I receive about complaints in the area, trying to deal with no loitering signs on the pathways and such, so I feel there's a lot, it's not overly always out there known publicly, but there is lots of efforts that are happening to try to curb the situation down there, and, you know, hopefully, we can also work with the, you know, the Outreach Center and the government staff as well, to address their part in this as well, and what they have to do to maintain, you know, some civility down there, and some assurances of public safety as well. So, just wanted to let you know that they're certainly not going unaddressed there from an internal perspective with the staff, thank you.
First resolution.
Parks Recreation and Leisure Activities Resolution Number One, moved by Counsel Kevin Ramsey, seconded by Counsel Bob Duran. Be it resolved that the city of Charlestown grants permission to the 2025 Canadian National Old Timers Federation Baseball Championship Organizing Committee to sell merchandise on site at Memorial Field for the duration of their event from July 31st to August 4th, 2025, and that the organizing committee be granted permission to erect and operate an alcohol beverage tent on site, as per the conditions set out in the Alcohol in Parks policy attached, and only for dates and times as follows. Thursday, July 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., Friday, August 1st, from 12:00 to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, August 2nd, from 12:00 to 9:00 p.m., Sunday, August 3rd, from 12:00 to 9:00 p.m., and Monday, August 4th, from 12:00 to 9:00 p.m., only if necessary. And further, that the mayor and C A O are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. No, just, I got a question here, do you want to take the question first?
Oh, yes, so, I'm sorry.
Okay, and then Counsel Ramsey, Counsel Deputy Mayor Yankoff, question, please.
Thank you, I certainly plan to support this resolution, but I'm curious, I've recalled other organizations that have been using Victoria Park, and had been turned down before it even got to this stage, and I'm just wondering, is, is this like a new normal, so that music events and stuff that are happening at Victoria Park would be able to have these types of tents too, or is this just for the sports teams? I'm just curious how that works.
Do you want to deal with it, Counsel Ramsey, or both of you?
I'd like to pass it on to our manager, Frank.
Thank you, Chair Ramsey, through to Deputy Mayor. So, with regards to, we take each request individually, and this request is, there is a tournament there, and they're requesting a defined area where this will be, the alcohol will be permitted to be sold, and it'll be an area that'll be security and managed and whatnot, so it's a very defined area, it has happened before, so it does meet the requirements of the alcohol in the park. If someone's having a large concert event, that's a total different type of an event, and then it would be, with regards to alcohol being sold, it would be different as well, because you can't charge for an event as well in Victoria Park, so that's what's unique as well, so, yeah, so each one's taken differently, but this one is, it's a sporting event that has happened before, it's a national old timers tournament that has occurred, and usually that's the only type of events that we ever actually, we ever approve for potential sale of alcohol, it's very rare that occurs in Victoria Park. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Ask another one, follow up.
Thanks, it doesn't really answer my question, so, the ball tournaments, they must be free events too, everything's free at Victoria Park, isn't it? Wasn't the idea, that's a part of the Victoria Park bylaw? I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering, I totally get that you look at these one at a time, but if somebody was, was doing something on the, in the pavilion, and they wanted to set up a tent, could they come to you and set up a beer tent like these folks are doing? I don't know, I'm just curious, or is it just for the sports teams?
Counsel Ramsey? You want deferred? Okay, deferred to the manager.
Here, sorry, my computer just locked up here, anyway, so I'm going by memory. I guess they could, but it would be a new type of an event, so we would have to go have a public meeting, and go through the process of the Victoria Park Prominent and Bylaw. This is an event that has happened before, and there is precedent set, so I guess that's the reason why we're bringing this forward, but it's not been something, I guess, if somebody was having a large event there, usually they would be wanting to charge some kind of fee, I guess, associated with it. This type of event, because there is a ball field there, and it's a premier ball field in Victoria Park, then a national tournament, they would make the request, that would be the field they would use, and we have approved requests before for sale of alcohol in the park. It is very rare, as over my time, years of doing this, maybe half a dozen times, and I've been here for 25 years, so. So, I guess there could be a request come in, it would have to go through our committee, and then it would have to come to council, like this one is.
C A, C A O, Fraser, anything to add to that, or just?
Your Worship, I don't have the alcohol and policy document in front of me, but I do know that, you know, past practice is certainly, to the manager's point, is playing a part in this particular request, but to the deputy's point, I don't see any reason why we could not conduct an event on the front field, for instance, or where the pavilion area is, with some sort of beverage tent where you have very restricted movement for having your beverage. I don't, I don't know why we couldn't do that if we were following the policy, and if required, we were following the bylaw that over, gives oversight to the policy. So, I would not ever say that we can't do that, I just think, to the manager's point, we haven't had, to my knowledge, any requests to do something like that in the past.
Frank, did you have a public consultation when this was, this is not the first time this old timers...
So, this is not the first time...
So, did you have a public consultation the first time it came to the, came to your department, was there a public consultation on it?
I can't 100% recall, it's in the notes, I think it was 2012, I don't recall that exactly, but the event was approved, the tournament was approved, and this was a request, and it did come through the committee and then council. As long as we're in adherence with the Victoria Park Prominent and Bylaw, there's been, yeah, so that's the biggest thing, we have to make sure we're in adherence to that. If we had a new type request, that would be something new that we would have to discuss, and I'd have to make sure, and we are looking at the Victoria Park Prominent and Bylaw, we're looking at reviewing that, because it does need some updating.
Counsel Bernard.
Yeah, just, might give some clarity for Counsel Yankoff, I know, like, Victoria Park is, these things that have come along have always been in sports, and probably don't get requests for other concerts or events, because you can't charge, Victoria Park, you don't have to charge fees, so probably wouldn't be, we don't get requests for that in Victoria Park, that's probably why a lot of times it is a sporting event, so, that is any clarity for you or not.
Well, no, or events like the Moonlight Bazaar, there's no, there's no charge to get into the Moonlight Bazaar, but their money, their profits come from the sale of beverages. Yeah, I know, but that's, that's the same here, the revenue's coming from the sale of beverages. Counsel Ramsey?
And I agree 100% with this, but as our manager stated, like, if there is a group out there that want to do that, I mean, bring it to us, and we'll bring it to council, and we'll all agree that, yeah, this could work, I agree with the C A O, which you said, if there's something going on there, if they want to set up a beer tent... set up a beer tent, whatever the activity is, you know, just bring it to us, and we'll certainly look at it. But as I said, this tournament happened years ago, there was never an issue, your worship, like, they're not 18 years old, these guys, it's the old timers in the rate across Canada. So, things went well the last time, thank you.
They're like us, old timers.
More questions?
Wrap her up there, deputy.
Thank you, I know this is my third question, but his worship said I was allowed, so thank you for that. I'm not questioning the ball, the selling of booze with the ball tournament. What I'm saying is that the reason probably, things like Moonlight Bazaar and things like that, don't even think about going to Victoria Park, because the idea of having an alcohol tent was, has probably been squashed for years, so now, hopefully, all you eight people listening to this meeting tonight will know that you might be able to do this too, that's all I mean.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Those eight people talk to neighbors, neighbors talk to neighbors, it'll get around. Okay, question called? Question called. All those in favor? Nine zero.
Parks Recreation Leisure Activities Resolution Two, moved by councillor Kevin Ramsay, seconded by councillor Bob Duron. Resolve that as per the recently advertised tender for the J. Frank McCauley Park Trail Upgrades Phase Two project, the City of Charlottetown accepts the low bid amount of $64,854.30 plus applicable taxes from Burt &amp; McKay Backhoe Services Limited, and that the amount of $12,900 plus applicable taxes from CBCL Limited for engineering fees, project management, and professional services be accepted. And further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
All those in favor? Nine zero.
Parks Recreation Leisure Activities Resolution Number Three, moved by councillor Kevin Ramsay, seconded by councillor Bob Duron. Be it resolved that council accepts the attached Towers Road Neighborhood Park Concept Plan to be used as a guiding document for the development of this neighborhood park.
You got a question there, okay. Question from the floor?
I'm glad to see this here, it's been years in the making. So, with respect to the plan, I believe, Chair, through to the manager, there was public consultation that helped with the development of the plan. That's my first, that's my first question.
Councillor Ramsay?
Passing on to the manager, please.
Yes, through Chair Ramsay, to councillor Twill, yes, there was public consultation, there was a letter sent out, we received surveys back, there was also a draft plan developed that was posted on the city's website, which the individuals were notified that this was there, and they had the opportunity to provide feedback there as well.
Okay. Second question, councillor Twill? Just press your button on.
So, it's used as a guiding document, so there's still an opportunity for improvisation as we move down the road, you know, in terms of the type of equipment that you're going to have there, parks, benches, playground equipment, or whatever the case may be. And the follow-up is, do you have a timeline and timeframe as to when the park will actually be developed?
Councillor Ramsay?
Yeah, this is, this is one park that we're not going to be adding any of the playground equipment or any of that, it's a place where it's along the trail, where they're going to be walking, and people, there's be benches and tables and that, and people be stopping for a break, and things along that line, but there's no playground equipment going in there, as of now. Am I correct? Manager Frank?
You are correct, Chair Twill, or Chair Ramsay, sorry for that.
Questions called? Okay, all those in favor? Nine zero.
Parks Recreation Leisure Activities Resolution Number Four, moved by councillor Kevin Ramsay, seconded by councillor Bob Duron. Resolve that council agrees to enter into the attached donation agreement memorandum of understanding with Buckets &amp; Borders Basketball, Inc., for the restoration of a single outdoor basketball court located at J. Frank McCauley Park, and that the City of Charlottetown agrees to contribute a total of $130,000 to this project, and further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute the standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
This is a great project, and it's going to be quite a venue down on Spring Lane, yeah, so it's going to be great. Councillor Ramsay, sorry, you want to just address it?
Yeah, I'd like to add on, I mean, Ward Two is really being looked after here, councillor Matar, so, you're welcome.
I must express my sincere gratitude for that, thank you very much, councillor Ramsay, for looking after Ward Two, but no, on a serious note, it's a great project, last time this was brought forward, we certainly talked about it. One of the things that I did mention at the time, and I hope we can still continue to do that to the chair, but through the manager, is just involve the community in the design and the work that's being done around there, I think it would be, go over well for some of the community members to just have input into that, I mean, not to, you know, just to feel like it's part of the community and they're all contributing. So, we did talk about that the last time, and I think there was commitment to ensure that happened. So, thank you for that, and thank you councillor Ramsay for everything you're doing for me, thank you.
Councillor McLeire.
Oh, just a quick comment and a question, a great project, you know, basketball community's been, I think, really, you know, really crying out for, you know, for something like this, great start. Are there opportunities, as time goes forward, to look at maybe another, other pads throughout the city somewhere?
I hope so. Councillor Ramsay?
I think of that, yes, I think this is the start of everything, and if we have more spots, like down where I live, and like, we sort of take it away from Ward Two, you know, go to Ward Five, or Ward Seven, or Ward Eight, if there's places out there, we're certainly going to look at it, because I think this group is really interested, are they not, manager Frank?
So, Chair Ramsay, so, we'll be asking the group, for sure, whether they do work across Canada, so they will go to other municipalities, they were in Halifax, they're doing one at West right now, so we'll ask, but we don't know whether to say yes, but we have reviewed all of our basketball pads and all of our basketball courts that we have in the city, so we have an idea of where they're at condition-wise. We started last year doing some upgrades to some of the pads, we're doing some more additional upgrades to pads and to basketball uprights, so we are moving it forward, and we've created a system where you have a full-size court system, you have a half-court system, and you have another, say, non-official full court, and then you would have recreational types. So, there's a different class system. Three-on-three basketball apparently is a large sport right now, so we're looking at how we can change our courts to accommodate that, and also where we can put lines on. It's going to be a process, we have 30-some courts and basketball pads, combinations, so we have a number that, and we're trying to get them to a better standard, and while invested in new courts as well.
Councillor McLeire, second time.
And just, just on another, another sport, I know I asked you, Frank, just for the meeting, on the uptake of the pickleball courts, the refurbishment that was done on the courts in Hillsborough, are there, are there opportunities to, to put that kind of texture on other, on other pads in the city, to increase the pickleball uptake or demand?
I think we're just dealing with this, councillor McLeire, you, we can, the chair will take note of that, okay? And Frank, the Spring Lane venue is a regulation-sized basketball court, correct?
Your worship, yes, so it has the space to accommodate, and it's all fenced in, and it's got a relatively good surface, with the exception of a minor deficiency we have to deal with, so.
Well, I'm sure councillor Matar will be walking in the area. Question called? Nine zero, okay, all in favor? All in favor? Okay, go ahead.
Parks Recreation Leisure Activities Resolution Number Five is moved by councillor Kevin Ramsay, seconded by councillor Bob Duron. Be it resolved that council, as per the Victoria Park and Promenade Bylaw, grants approval to the organizers of the 2025 Dragon Boat Festival to host the event in Victoria Park on August 9th, 2025, and that the organizers will be permitted to use the Victoria Park Floating Dock as a space to load and unload the Dragon Boat teams, and that it is understood by the Dragon Boat Festival Organizing Committee that all activities within the park are governed by the Victoria Park and Promenade Bylaw, and as such, will be monitored by the Parks and Recreation Manager, and further, that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Okay. Councillor Ramsay says he's going to have a team. Deputy Mayor? Hold on, no, no, deputy wants to ask a question.
What a wonderful event, happening in August.
Yes.
So, if the Dragon Boat Festival people applied, would they be able to get a tent and maybe have some nice colliding tides while they watch the race? Just wondering.
Good question. Mr. Chair, do you want to answer that? Can you please stand up?
Let them bring it to the community, sir. We'll certainly look at it, if that's what they want, and I couldn't see an issue, thank you.
Yeah. It is, and the last time we had it was, held it was in 2001 and 2003.
Big crowd, big crowd.
Yeah, okay. Questions called? All in favor? Nine zero, okay. That's it, and now I think we have water, wastewater. Councillor Duron?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on June 5th, and there is one resolution coming forward for your consideration, and something else in the closed session, maybe, I don't know, it says here. So, if you have any questions, feel free to ask me, and we'll deal with it then.
Okay. Do you want to read that? Okay.
Water and Sewer Utility Resolution Number One, moved by councillor Bob Duron, seconded by councillor John McLeire. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown proceeds with a memorandum of agreement for hydrometric gauge monitoring, and accepts the quotation submitted by the Department of Environment, Energy, and Climate Action, the amount of $67,463 for fiscal year 2025-2026, $67,869 for fiscal year 26-27, and $69,905 for fiscal year 27-28, plus all applicable taxes, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Okay. Questions called? Questions called? All those in favor? Nine zero. Okay. Councillor McKinnon, okay, new business?
Yes, your worship, we have a resolution moved by Deputy Mayor Lana Yankoff, and seconded by councillor Julie McCabe, that effective immediately and as recommended by his worship, Mayor Philip Brown, the following appointments be approved. Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Andrew Rose, Civic Board for Persons with Disabilities Raquel McBean, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Saget Sestra, and Youth Engagement Advisory Committee Nevo Murray.
Questions called? All those in favor? Okay, just one second. Yes, McKinnon, just want to get this done. Okay, we're going to be going into a closed session, but just before we do, I think we all know that this will be our CAO's last council meeting, and I have enjoyed the opportunity to work with our CAO, interim CAO, Sue Fraser. She's an upfront person, she puts everything on the table and gets the job done, so I do want to say, thank you very much for everything you've done. Thank you. I don't know if any, if anyone wishes, if there are any other well wishes, but.
Does she retire again?
Yes, and her package will be in the mail. Okay, I need a resolution to go to a.
We need to extend this reality.
Okay, we need an extension. Okay. Okay. So, I need a resolution to extend the meeting, moved by the deputies, seconded by councillor Matar. All those in favor? Okay, and I'm just going to the closed agenda.
And I'm just going to the closed agenda.[297.83]
We're back into an open, open session.
There we are.
Okay, call to order, any declarations of conflict of interest in this issue?
Seeing none.
Do you have a resolution there, CAO, Sue Fraser?
I do, your worship, my last one.
Oh, you had that already typed up.
It's all ready to roll. Water and Sewer Utility Resolution Number Two, moved by Councilor Justin Matarret, seconded by Councilor John McAlaire. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown proceeds with the procurement of Block 25A, 16.2 acres, the severance of lands from PID 13133405, a portion of land situation within the Wellfield Protection 250-day travel zone, and accepts the purchase price in the amount of $162,000 plus applicable taxes, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
And moved by Councilor McAlaire and seconded by, oh, moved by Councilor Matarret. Okay. Question call? All in favor? Eight zero? Eight zero. Council Trill, motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much.